Okay, all right, welcome everyone to our regular city council meeting on Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018. For the viewing audience, we are at the Veterans Memorial Hall and it's starting at 6:00 PM. And with that, we do have a quorum of city council and we'll call the meeting into order. And if we could just start out with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And I was going to ask Walter Heath to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up, we don't have anything for recognition tonight. Close session report, reportable actions from tonight's close session.
No reportable actions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, announcements for council at this point, Red?
Thank you, yes. I want to say a few words about Morro Bay and Bloom. And I know that Chief Bloomy Walter Heath is going to make a presentation to the city in a few minutes, but Walter is very shy and he hates to talk about himself, so I want to speak for him. I want to thank the Bloomies for the display they have put into the roundabout. Last Wednesday, Walter got a group of folks together and they went up and spent, what, a half hour or so, and put up this, just these beautiful autumn decorations. And I want to recognize the crew. We owe thanks to Chuck Stoll for picking up and delivering straw bales and wheelbarrows, to Nancy Castle for providing the wheelbarrows, to Farm Supply Company for donating straw bales, and to Don Fisher, Joanne Coghlan, Carrie Filler, Judith Carlson, Earlene Harmon, Sharon Rooney, John O'Brien, and Rick Austin for installing the two beautiful fall floral displays at the roundabout. So, thank you all very much.
All right, thank you guys.
Okay, thanks, Red. No, thanks for doing that.
I do not have any announcements, but I too would like to double what Red just said about the Bloomies. Thank you very much, Walter.
Thanks, John?
I'll triple it. And one other announcement, I had the opportunity after the last couple of city council meetings to meet with a number of folks that contacted me regarding public comment, that process, et cetera. And it was a good exchange of information. And recently, the mayor brought forward, a couple of months ago, the county/mayor's group adopted code of conduct that we discussed, but never codified. And in addition, we do have a code of conduct that we have codified, in addition to our public comment decorum that we have on each of the agendas. And so with that, you know, I basically realized that I too may have been inappropriate and I wanted to make apologies to Mr. Oaks for comments that I made regarding his editorial. I've had the opportunity to meet with him and apologize directly to him. In essence, I stand by what I said, but I shouldn't have singled him out as an individual. And that's part of our code and something that I ascribe to. And so, Mr. Oaks, if you're here, I saw you earlier, I do apologize. And thanks to the other members of the community for coming forward and just chatting with me about that and what the future might look like with regard to that, so, thank you.
All right, John, thanks. Marla's?
Well, I'd just like to quadruple the thanks to Morro Bay and Bloom. We're so proud of your accomplishments and everything you've done for the community and we so appreciate it. So, thank you, Walter, and the whole team that's out there.
Okay, great. And I'd like to extend my thanks as well. Red, thanks for going through the work of getting all the details and everyone's name of Morro Bay and Bloom that was involved, so we can put that recognition. You initiated the recognition from council level and we'll have some other discussion with that tonight, but tomorrow at Morro Bay and Bloom, thanks. And then, I just wanted to, I have a question in regard to, just get an update, Mr. Graham, just want to, our sign ordinance update and just, if you could just give us a brief update that and I might have a question in that regard.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. The sign ordinance is, we completed it, the draft of it about a year ago, and it's kind of teed up as part of the general plan, local coastal program, and zoning code update. And it's being plugged into the zoning code piece of the update. It's been reviewed by the, again, by the planning commission and once we complete review of the zoning code portion, which probably will happen at our next meeting for planning commission, then it'll all be rolled back into the single zoning code and brought back forward through public hearing process for recommendation to council.
Okay, all right, thanks. And so, earlier asked a little bit about this as well, because we're seeing another, kind of a resurgence of the sandwich board signs around town, which led to the initiation of the sign ordinance, because they were overwhelming our walkways. And so, we're seeing a resurgence of sandwich board signs. Is there any way we can address that?
So, currently, the current sign ordinance doesn't allow sandwich board signs in the city, period. They're prohibited everywhere. The draft ordinance prohibits them down on the waterfront, but allows them in other areas with special permits. So, right now, they're not allowed, so we could simply go by and contact those business owners and let them know that.
Is there any way we can, you know, send out something, maybe through the chamber and the business, you know, just remind the business some sort of letter? We can do that? And I was looking...
Well, I mean, we can, we can always go through that process by, and we have the code enforcement officer, they can go by and identify where they're at and we can send out, you know, sort of warning letters that that's not allowed in those areas. And then, the areas where they will potentially be allowed, that might be able to bring them back and say the downtown Quintana, North Main areas, once the new ordinance is adopted, they can come.
And then, just with information that our sign ordinance is still underway?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, thanks.
We certainly do that.
Any other additional comments in that regard? No? Okay, great. And with that, we, any other comments, Mr. City Manager Scott?
Yes, our fire chief has an important announcement for the community.
All right, great.
Thank you, Scott, and Mr. Mayor and council. This Sunday, we're going to have our third annual open house with a health and resource fair with partnership with Lontino Health Coalition, Dignity Health, NOR, and CHC. We're going to have a bunch of nonprofit health providers in our engine bay, no cost, low-cost options for the families to come by and check them out. We're also going to offer free flu shots. We're also going to teach hands-only CPR with the Bee Gees. We're going to have a fire safety house there, where kids will actually grow, actually crawl through a two-story trailer when it fills with smoke, and we're going to train them how to get out of their house in case there's a fire. We're actually going to have fire extinguisher training too, with live flames. And a bunch of informational booths from nonprofits in our county. It's this Sunday at the fire station, 1 to 4.
Thanks, chief. Any questions? All right, thanks very much. And with that, any other further announcements at this point? Seeing none, okay, we'll bring it back. First up, we've got two presentations tonight, and I'll just remind everyone that we do have speaker slips in the back of the room, so if you want to, if there's, we have speaker slips for our regular public comment period, which we'll be going on into in a moment. And then, we have public comment slips for each item on the agenda, so we'll go through the public comment period for items that are not on the agenda. And for those of you that can't stay for items later on in the agenda, you can fill out a speaker slip for that time and then we'll accommodate that under our regular public comment period. So, with that, our first presentation up for the Chamber of Commerce, Ms. Erica Crawford. Welcome, Erica. Thanks, thanks for coming. How we doing on that mic? Okay. Yeah. Jesse, you're amazing.
Testing? Oh, we're on.
All right, here we go.
Hi.
Thanks, Jesse.
Thanks, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Staff, Erica Crawford from the Morbid Chamber of Commerce here to give a quarter three update. This will also be our first quarterly update of, I think we're down, we got it. Should I continue?
Are you there? Microphone?
Mike?
Jesse, we're still having a little bit of intermittent...
Testing, testing, there we go, we're back.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Great, here we go. Okay, so I'm just going to dive in. So, I just start with this, our chamber is championing our community. The upper left-hand side, we're looking at a packed house from the candidates forum, which was at the end of September. We were very proud to bring, as we know, a lot of our residents are also business owners in Morro Bay. We find it very important to bring candidates in front of the residents to be able to really shine, and we felt that it was a great event. Bottom left is Rotary, top right, Morro Bay Aquatics, and the bottom right is the cheerleaders, not pictured as the Astero Bay New Commerce Club. Each beneficiary is from the Avocado and Margarita Festival, so we're really happy to have their participation in our event. We also participate with the community in our Main Street Market. That little face on the bottom right is our new market manager, Jeff Nielsen. He's been doing an amazing job getting the market extended and revitalized. He is a farmer himself and he's been working very hard to get our market recertified and getting more farmer produce back to the market. This is the layout that we're currently working with. We did extensive outreach with some of the business owners on Morro Bay Boulevard. We had a little rocky start and we've worked that out. And we are now hearing some of the businesses on Morro Bay Boulevard reporting that their Saturday sales are back, which is nice, some not all. But I think it's a very nice, happy community vibe down at the market, to the extent that we're going to do a pre-Thanksgiving event, so a community fair, community cornucopia. We'll have some of our farmers sharing their favorite family recipes. You'll be able to do your shopping before the Thanksgiving holiday at our downtown market. We'll have some entertainment, maybe a food cooking demo. Part of the reason we're here is, of course, to report on our two contracts with the City of Morro Bay. We'll start with the visitor center. This is a photograph of the visitor center as it is now. We had a generous donation by Seashells and Sawdust in the downtown, who subsidized the cost of painting the visitor center and some new furniture in there, so it's very open, it's very bright, it's very welcoming. We also have invested in some technology. As you know, we have a new website with the, excuse me, with the chamber. And our database allows us now to send referrals to businesses in real time. So, as our visitor center staff is referring, we're able to let businesses know, hey, we mentioned you today, we sent some business your way, and we've been getting great feedback from that feature. Total inquiries over time, this is small numbers, but we can see from '16 to '18, there has been a decrease in the total visitation at the visitor center. I think this is a function of Highway One being closed, I think this is a function of wayfinding and signage, which we'll talk about with the next contract. And I think we are not located in the center of an economic center. So, we are working with this and we are absolutely letting our businesses know, part of that technological contact with the referral is, hey, don't forget to get your rack cards in here, you know, we are promoting you. This is an infographic of, you know, over 3,000 people through our front door. We are most certainly pushing towards places where people can spend their dollars in Morro Bay. Accommodations, retail, dining, paid activities, events, has been a really big one. This is year-to-date, calendar year-to-date. You can see directions in map, the largest thing that people are coming to the visitor center asking for. So, that brings us into our second contract here to report. This is our first report, so quarter, quarter one of activities in 4MB. We'll start with the outreach piece. We are doing monthly business walks. We've engaged with 35 businesses so far since July. We ask three very open-ended questions and they're open-ended on purpose. We're trying to reestablish trust, build trust, really talking about, how's your business doing? Do you have any climate concerns, business climate? Do you have any suggestions for building a stronger business community? We've been walking myself, the city manager, Scott Collins, and Red Davis from council diligently every month. We've had our fire marshal join us, we've had Eric Casares join us, we've had some of fellow business owners, Susan Stewart, who's here, has joined us. So, this has been going well. Smack in the middle of that is our partners, so that's a list of all of the partners in the 4MB project. That is the leave behind, that we leave behind in the businesses after we walk. A focus group directly follows a business walk. So, a week later, we are engaging business owners in each of the districts that we just walked. We are notifying every business, whether or not we visited them the week before, by phone or in person with an actual flyer. The first cycle, we go in an order, North Morro Bay, Embarcadero, downtown Quintana. We'll repeat the cycle. This first cycle's purpose was to introduce each district to some of the Cal Poly student renderings for wayfinding signage and some of the branding ideas, materials, colors, and also to have a broader conversation about identity in each of those districts. Who are you? How can you connect? How can you change your business mix based on your branding and your identity? I wanted to show you, these are some of the renderings. Again, these are not final by any means, these were means of, you know, kind of starting conversations with the businesses. You can see some different materials, different logo placements, different, you know, kind of feelings. Maybe this is something on the Embarcadero, but not in the downtown. This is downtown, not Embarcadero, maybe North Morro Bay. And each of these renderings will be sent out to a community-wide survey. We're working with one of the interns at the Community Development Department, Willow, who's helping us to get these images on a survey. We'll be sending this out via, hopefully, City's Hot Topics, our Chamber eBlast. First question on that survey, are you a resident? Are you a business owner? Are you both? So that we can extrapolate through that data. We're hoping to get some really great feedback on that. So, that's the outreach piece of the contract. The resource or the assistance piece are these demand-driven workshops. So, these are now called Training to Succeed. It's a series of educational workshops for businesses. They happen every month and we are trying something new. We're Facebook live streaming them, so we have a professional video company who does that. It's awesome. People are able to, you know, if they're not able to get out of their shop from 4:00 to 6:00 and it's slow, they can engage right there and they can ask us questions as it's going on. If they are not able to do that, they're being stored on our Facebook page. So, some of the clarification of terms, Facebook reach is the number of unique people who saw the content. Engagement is defined as the clicks and the likes and the shares. You can see, you know, almost 2,000 in our August Small Business Success is Not an Accident workshop with our partners at MCSC. But for me, we need physical attendance for these. You know, we're trying to get this one-on-one mentoring going. To date, our partners report that they're working with just north of 20 businesses in Morro Bay. We want to be able to track that over time, make sure that that number's going up. And the next business workshop is directly related to some of our reportable metrics on how many businesses are working on refreshing or writing a business plan, so this is going to be a really timely one. I won't spend much time on this because it's more ideation stage or idea stage, but this is something I'm very passionate about, is our workforce development programming through this contract. We're partnered with Questa Eckerd, we're re-engaging the high school, possible collaboration with Just One Job Fair. We do have a grant on, I think we're going to get it, to do with secret shoppers and customer service for six full-service restaurants in Morro Bay. So, we can use that data to support some of the, this concept of a Morro Bay standard. Maybe it's a series of four, two-and-a-quarter-hour afternoon classes to link the fact that if you, as a business owner, hire a sophomore in high school, with the fact that many of these students are now going to Questa, as many as 75% of our graduating class at Morro Bay High School is going to Questa for their free promise year, which is now endowed for a second year, which means you might get a sophomore to work in your business for three or four years. So, you can engage them, you can have that relationship with them, you can build trust with them, they can close your store, you can move them up into a management, something like that. So, these are idea stages, but something that's very exciting. We worked with our partners yesterday at a meeting, and tomorrow, we're working with our assistant partners at a second meeting. So, some of the goals, higher workshop attendance for sure, these are goals for me, that I'm working with my team for the next three months. We do have a plan, a business resource fair to plan. We need to do a better job at the chamber of maintaining a list of businesses specific to this contract. We talk to businesses all day, every day. Everything from, I'm outgrowing my space, I need something bigger, to, hey, I have a friend who really wants to open a business in Morro Bay. We need to be able to, to kind of report those metrics out. So, we'll be working on systems for that. Finalizing topics for discussion with the commercial property owner engagements, very important. I think we're going to understand more from the business owner, or the commercial property, the building owners, what maybe some of their barriers to redevelopment or looking at their properties with fresh eyes might be. Standardizing and strengthening communications between Eckerd, so the job seekers and the job providers, and doing a survey on who among the businesses are looking for career-connected pathways. I hear that a lot in automotive, they need somebody to work in this and they're going to move them up in an apprenticeship, versus somebody who's looking to just retain young employees. We do all of that, but we're also a member-serving organization, so we do our members, mixers, we've been having great, you know, and I think this, this purpose of this slide is to say, we have fun too. You know, we're talking to each other, we're engaging, we're promoting, we're cross-promoting. Membership has its privileges in that way. Very proud of our member director, Catherine Gillan, who came to me with a new program that she wanted to launch, launched on Friday. So, this is a chance for members who are just getting indoctrinated into the idea of the chamber, or even people who have joined years ago, where we didn't really have this going on. We do now. I was not at this meeting because I was engaged with city managers, community development directors, and my fellow chamber CEOs for a regionalism conversation. So, I think this is a nice thing, the depth of our organization, that this can be going on and then we can also be engaging on that regional level. And I wanted to make an announcement, we do have our board election results. So, we have Jane Engel Allen, Amber Clark, Tim Cowan, and Stephen Peck, who will be joining our board for three years. These people were elected by the membership. They'll be joining our current directors, who are still in term. So, we're celebrating and convening leadership. We're celebrating on January 11th at this party. So, we're celebrating our living treasure, our community citizen of the year, and that's it. I ran toward that race line.
You know, you did great, Erica, thanks.
All right, thanks, guys.
And so, when is the, when do you do the balloting thing for, like, living treasure or citizen of the year?
We have our flyers, we'll be releasing that tomorrow in the eBlast, so we have that all going and then, I don't know, you know, might put it in the paper, we'll definitely get the word out that the nomination season is open.
Okay.
So, we'll be doing the student citizen of the year again, the citizen of the year, the living treasure, and the business of the year.
Okay.
All right.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, Erica, your new board members, I'm sorry?
Oh, yes.
I got three, but I didn't catch the board.
Jane Engel Allen of Engel and Associates Insurance, Amber Clark from the Allen Property Group, she runs the Masterpiece or the La Serena, one of the three. Stephen Peck from Peck Planning and Development, and Tim Cowan, who's downtown Pizza Port and also Haven Realty.
And the 24th, 4:00 to 6:00 PM location?
Is at the Alco's Room at the Inn at Morro Bay.
Okay.
Yep, and there's, there's a little bit of food.
Okay.
So, that's, we're trying to really push that physical attendance, come and eat.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erica. Okay. All right, with that, great presentation, and next up, we have Morro Bay and Bloom, a presentation of outstanding achievement award for landscaped areas. Walter, are you doing that?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome. And the Morro Bay and Bloom? All right, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council, thanks for this opportunity. The, people might be wondering what Morro Bay and Bloom is. We're an all-volunteer organization, people of all ages and physical abilities, who get together two hours a week to garden in the public spaces, trying to make them nicer and trying to keep them nice, to maintain what work we've started. Our next opportunity, if you want to find out what it's all about, will be Saturday from 9:00 AM till 11:00 AM at Centennial Parkway, that's the Giant Chessboard Plaza. So, all are invited to come and see what that's all about and be part of it. We welcome everybody, looking forward to that. So, on to the presentation. I'm pleased to present the residence of Morro Bay and city staff, this award for outstanding achievement in landscaped areas by America in Bloom. Morro Bay's municipal, commercial, and residential landscapes were judged the best overall among forty, four zero, forty participating communities this year. Our entire community can celebrate this award with pride. The diversity of plant selections and the manner in which plants are combined in very challenging growing conditions are remarkable. This year's judges, who in their professional lives are the director of a botanical garden and a celebrated landscape architect, made numerous favorable comments in their 29-page evaluation that I have shared with our city manager and with all of you. Our judges also want our community to know that we are indeed fortunate to have the skilled and versatile seven-person maintenance staff that performs construction and maintenance for all municipal buildings, performs park maintenance, and street repairs. And I don't think any of them are here tonight, I did invite them, but I think we should all give them, in absentia, a round of applause, because they are indeed remarkable. So, at this time, I'd like to present to Mayor Irons this award and participation plaque for display at City Hall. So, this is the award for outstanding achievement in landscaped areas, and this is the, this is the participation plaque. It was awarded at Lexington, Kentucky this year. It was really an awesome symposium and I hope someday we'll have one in Morro Bay. So, here you go.
Thing one. Yeah, that's thing one and thing two.
Walter, thanks.
Yeah, you're good, it's our pleasure.
Thanks for recognizing my name, it's guys. I don't want to say hello to you guys, but you're doing that, but our maintenance folks from there are doing the work as well.
Yeah, great partners. Thanks a lot.
So, John Weiss, Dan Sedley, Aaron Oaks, Christine Roberts, okay. Okay, good. And then, Big Moore. And then, Holly. Okay, good. And then, okay. All right, thanks again, everyone. Moving on to our next part of the agenda, we have public comment. I have a group of speaker slips for regular general public comment for items not on the agenda. Following that, I have some speaker slips for items C1, C2, and C2. These are speaker slips for people who want to speak to those items but can't wait for the items later on the agenda. So, I'll go through regular public comment speaker slips and then, at the end, I'll follow up with that. And I think we have an AM representative from Slocow that'll be going during our regular public comment period. So, with that, as always, we do have a business spot that we go forward with, that opens up our public comment, and we have Eric Terhorst from the Skateboard Museum. Eric, welcome. Thanks. Introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council, city staff.
Can we, can we get a mic check on that?
Sibilance, sibilance.
Jesse, a little bit more?
How's that? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, that's better. Maybe a little bit more volume from our folks back there, thank you.
So, my name is Eric Terhorst, I'm the current docent at our Morro Bay Skateboard Museum. The museum was founded in 2012 by Jack Smith, a local resident in Morro Bay since 1972, also a professional skateboarder and a memorabilia collector. In 2012, Jack and his wife Kathy decided that they needed a place to start keeping some of this collection that was growing, and they started a small, little closet with about 75 skateboards, which in Jack's first dream, it was a place where people could kind of come and take a little bit of, take a seat down on the Embarcadero and maybe talk about skateboards. In the last six and a half years that we've been doing this, the museum has grown exponentially... In the last six and a half years that we've been doing this, the museum has grown exponentially. We are unparalleled and unprecedented in terms of both our preservation and the history that we promote there. With over 500 pieces in our permanent collection, we have things from skateboard decks, magazines, and we really try to appeal to all ages. One of the favorite things that people like to do, older guys bring their families in to look and tell stories about, and try and make those connections with their kids and say, "Look, this is a real skateboard." So, so we have things on display there that maybe some of you have never seen before. And, you know, during the last, oh, year and a half when Highway 1 was closed, we all know that we had, we had problems, but one of the things that Morro Bay specifically, with the museum, we offered a place where people would go online, they'd look and say, "Oh, TripAdvisor, Morro Bay, number two thing to do in Morro Bay, let's go there." So one of the things that we do is, when people show up there, we do talk about skateboards, but we also like to let the museum talk a little bit about itself. And so as people go around, we start asking them, "Where are you from? Why did you?" "Oh, well, we came just to see the museum, we were on our way to San Francisco or to Los Angeles, and we heard about this, and we've never heard of anything like this." As a matter of fact, it is the only skateboard museum with this type of formal collection with a docent, and somebody that you can go in and learn from. So our mission statement is basically to interpret and preserve the history of skateboarding there, to talk about the cultural impacts locally, nationally, and internationally. Many of you probably rode a skateboard. If you didn't, you know somebody who did. And, you know, I made skateboarding a crime in Morro Bay at one point, and I'm happy to say that the museum was influential in helping reverse that. And Jack was one of the people that worked with the community, we worked, tried to work as a liaison with some of these kids that are flying down the street, maybe they're not paying attention to stop signs and things like that, but we offer a kind of a beacon for those people to come and find out a little bit more about what we do. Some of the collection, most of it is through Jack's, but we do work with a lot of private collectors and professional writers. So we have the second-largest skateboard in the world there, as well as John Lennon's skateboard, which is on loan for the first time. So, I know my time is probably up, but again, thank you for your time listening to us this evening.
Alright, Eric, thanks very much, and to Jack and Kathy for all their work as well.
They do express they couldn't be here this evening.
Alright, thanks, Eric. And with that, we'll open up public comment. First up, Susan Stewart, and then John Weiss.
Good evening, Susan Stewart. I'm a 30-year resident and 12-year business owner in Morro Bay, and I wanted to tell you about October 6th, where I started out the morning by stopping by the library where there was a really cool children's art show and sale in the parking lot, and then I had to go over to the Boulevard and there was, it was all closed off, there was a skateboard event going on in the street that none of the businesses knew about, and sadly, I didn't see very many people attending. Then I went down to the Harbor Festival to volunteer at some booths there, and that seemed to be really hopping. I knew further up the Embarcadero was Gio's Alternative Event in his parking lot, and then, of course, in the afternoon, we have the great Chamber, Community, and Farmer's Market Event on Morro Bay Boulevard and Main Street. So I'm not going to talk about parking, believe it or not, with all those great events going on. What I'm going to talk about is, this was a super cool day in Morro Bay, there was a lot going on, and I felt like we had missed a huge opportunity for promoting our town. So all of these events likely had to have permits, and if so, is there a way to get that information to the Tourism Bureau so they can promote all these events as this package of what's happening here? Let the folks at the Visitor Center and Chamber know so that when people are calling and saying, "Why is my street closed?", they have some answers for that. And then also, if you notify us as businesses and as locals, we can share that information about all this cool stuff happening in town on our social media stuff and our newsletters. I may have just a few thousand people that I reach, but if we're all doing that, we're giving you a whole bunch of free advertising. So, really recommend that, we can make a big impact, we're doing some cool, neat things in town, but if we don't know about it, if we're not getting that information shared, and sometimes it's hard for the organizers to put that out there. In other news, and I did just talk with the city manager about it a little bit, but I was really pleased to see that the Tourism Department had earmarked funds for installations and landscape improvements. And we have these citizen organizations that are ready and willing to facilitate city-related goals and improvements, including lighting the trees in the downtown and creating a beautiful Franklin Riley Founders Park. And as far as I know, the Tourism Bureau has approved those installation grants, but it hasn't hit the city council agenda yet. So it'd be great if we could get those things agendized so we can get moving on it and maybe have some lights up by December in the downtown. A little bit on the critical side, I also suggest we do a better job of proofreading the copy that is on our visitor sites and newsletters. For example, the Heroes Wine Walk will be hoping with people dressed as and celebrating your favorite heroes. We have a soap company that has paragon-free soaps, and our link for the Lighted Boat Parade said, "The will be lit is all the festive holiday spirit for your enjoyment while you dine in one of the many waterfront restaurants."
Thanks, Susan.
So that makes us sound a little tacky. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Next up, John Weiss, and then Dan Sedley.
To council staff and those watching at home, my name is John Weiss, Morro Bay resident, business owner and candidate for mayor. I hope you have a great meeting. I am concerned about the September 11th meeting when about 1,000 protest letters were set aside and not counted. Until we don't, until counted, we don't really know if those that took the time to exercise their right have been heard. We should listen to all the people, whether quiet or vocal, it is a democratic way. Therefore, I ask the protest votes be validated and proceed with appropriate contracts. By counting and validating the protest letters reduces the possible potential for litigation, which I do oppose. Thanks very much for your kind attention, I'm listening.
Thank you. Next up, Dan Sedley, and then Aaron Oaks.
Hi, I'm Dan Sedley, I live in Morro Bay. It seems like it's become one of my favorite topics, or second favorite topics, to talk about the Code of Civility. And first, I want to start out with thanks to John Heading for hearing me out on the Code of Civility and his apologizing to Aaron Oaks. And previous, before that, Red Davis did something similar. And to me, that makes them more appreciative of the Code of Civility, because we all make mistakes, myself included, and they realize their mistakes, and they've, they've shown the bigger people that they can be by looking at the Code of Civility and saying, "Yes, that's what I aspire to, and that's what I'm aiming for, and that's where we want to be." In regards to the Code of Civility, the Code of Civility was agreed to by primarily San Luis Obispo mayors, as I understand it, and brought back to Morro Bay, but has not yet been placed on the agenda, nor has it yet been ratified or enacted or placed on the city website or placed on any of our city agendas. And for those that are not familiar with the Code of Civility, as it was listed in the Telegram Tribune, it's the only place I could find it, it says, number one, listen first, simply listen first. Number two, respect different opinions. Number three, be courteous. Number four, disagree constructively. And number five, debate the policy, not the person. It's pretty simple, but it's not widely found unless, unless you go looking on the internet and you can find the Tribune article. I think it should be listed prominently in our city's website and our city agendas. Moving on, last week Cynthia Hawley, a respectable member of our community, spoke during public comment, and she was interrupted several times. She was quoting a periodical and not attacking any public official. Cynthia Hawley's, stifling Cynthia Hawley's comments is an attack on her First Amendment rights and the Code of Civility. I am requesting that Cynthia Hawley be publicly apologized and that interruptions of the public comment not occur again. Also, I am challenging members of the city council to call any other member out of order if they stifle public comment. I want to say that again. Also, I am challenging members of the city council to call any other member out of order if they stifle public comments. Further, in regards to the Code of Civility, I'm requesting that the Code of Civility be placed on the city county, city, I can't even talk, placed on the city council agenda for the express purpose of discussion and ratification as a resolution to be abided by.
Thank you, Dan.
I... Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Aaron Oaks.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff. My name is Aaron Oaks of Save Morro Bay. So before I begin my remarks, I want to personally thank Mr. Heading for taking the time to meet with me and to apologize to me both privately and publicly, and I thought we had a very constructive conversation, I believe this is progress. We are moving in the right direction as far as civil discourse, so thank you, Mr. Heading. So let's get, let's get to the brass tacks. So I do have an announcement to make. Save Morro Bay has tapped an attorney to inspect and count the ballots, specifically the 1,000, approximately 1,000 ballots that were disregarded by the council. I believe that these voices that were thrown out should be heard, and I'm going to do whatever is necessary legally to get those votes counted and validated. By validating those votes, that will grant you legitimacy going forward with the proposed water reclamation facility. And like Mr. Weiss said, you know, I oppose litigation, just like most citizens, we don't want to go to court. I don't want to go to court, but if that's what it takes, that's what I'm willing to do for the community. I'm here for those 1,000 voices, and I want them to be heard. Nationwide, voter suppression is happening. It's happening in Georgia, it's happening in Tennessee, in Kansas, but Morro Bay, it's gonna, it's happening right now in Morro Bay. Why? I think that we need to rise up and get the votes counted. What do you have to lose? So, in conclusion, I wish the council the best, and I hope that the council develops a conscience in the matter and ultimately decides to count and validate the approximately 1,000 votes that were disenfranchised. Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council Members, City Staff. My name is Christine Robertson, and I am the Vice President of Community Engagement and Advocacy for Visit Slow Cal, our countywide tourism marketing organization. And I am here tonight to express our strong support for the city of Morro Bay to host the Amgen Tour of California in 2019. Over the past year, Visit Slow Cal has been actively working with AEG to secure the return of the Amgen Tour of California to Slow Cal this coming year. We petitioned for the race to include Highway 1 as part of our reactivation campaign to promote the reopening of the scenic coastal highway. As we've done in the past, Visit Slow Cal has set aside $50,000 in sponsorship funding to assist communities in hosting the race. The race must include a minimum of at least two communities for Visit Slow Cal's sponsorship to be authorized. With a projected start in Pismo Beach and a projected finish in Morro Bay, Visit Slow Cal would split the funds between the two communities. Although we haven't seen contracts from AEG to date, which would define the actual split in 2017 under a similar format, the split was $32,000 to Morro Bay and $18,000 to Pismo Beach. We would expect something similar again this year. Visit Slow Cal doesn't invest in the Tour of California as a strategy to deliver heads and beds during the event, and we don't recommend communities participate for this reason either. Instead, we invest in the Tour of California as a unique awareness campaign. Even with a $4 million annual budget, our organization could never afford two hours of international television coverage on NBC Sports. This video postcard to the world provides us and your community the ability to showcase the destination in a way previously unavailable before Visit Slow Cal negotiated this premier coverage as part of our sponsorship package. During the 20-month closure of Highway 1, the North Coast, including Morro Bay, saw a decrease of 54,000 room nights, equivalent to the City of San Francisco hotels being closed for two straight days. Visit Slow Cal was able to keep those room nights in the county and work to get those individuals into the North Coast communities during their stay. From our partnership with Visit California and the Dream Drive Highway 1 reopening event, we've already seen over 296 media placements to date, with more than 429 million impressions for the reactivating of Highway 1 and Morro Bay as open for business. As we continue to work to make the message known, we strongly support AEG in bringing the Amgen Tour of California and the premier television coverage back to our county, and we believe that Morro Bay is the perfect pictorial backdrop to finish the race in Slow Cal. Thank you for your support of this event, and we look forward to working with you to showcase the community in the coming year.
Thanks, Christine. Next up, Rigmore. Thanks for coming, Ella. Thanks for coming, Ella.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council and Staff. My name is Rigmore, Morro Bay. Please award the Wharf contract tonight. If we delay, it will for sure cost us way more later. Let us not get stuck in who won or who did not win. I have friends who are part of the activist group, and they're great people, we just have different opinions. You up there, together with your staff, spent years now checking and rechecking every different site and way to get this sewer plant going, and I'm pretty sure you did not take the awful job of sitting on the city council if you did not want the absolute best for Morro Bay. I think you have decided on the best and least contentious site, and whether sea rice or not, in my opinion, a sewer plant should never have been built on, built on our beautiful coast, and we need to move forward with the time. Thank you.
Thanks, Rigmore. Next up, John Elliott. AGP, we've got an overhead, if you can help with that.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff. My name is John Elliott, here tonight representing the Morro Bay Trick or Treat Committee. I'm here to remind all the families to meet downtown on Halloween at 3:00 p.m. to pick up your maps at Grandma's Frozen Yogurt Courtyard, the gathering place at 307 Morro Bay Boulevard. Businesses will be handing out treats from 3:00 to 5:30 this year. There's a Facebook page set up on the city Facebook, and there's other information available on the website. This year, we have over 80 brick and mortar businesses on the map, over 12 businesses and organizations in the closed-off area, which is Morro Bay Boulevard below Main Street. The Police Department Haunted House will be going from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. this year, so you'll have a little time after the 5:30 treats are over to check that out. And I want to thank the city of Morro Bay, Chamber of Commerce, Morro Bay and Bloom, and everyone else on our committee that's helped make this event happen, and looking forward to seeing you there.
Thanks, John. Next up, Cynthia Hawley, and then I've got the speaker slips for those items not on the regular agenda, public comment agenda.
Good evening, Council, I'm Cynthia Hawley. I want to read the procedures from the city's procedure, policies and procedure. I want to read the procedures from the city's procedure, Policies and Procedure Book, Section 13724, which reads, "Persons addressing the council shall address the council as a whole and shall not engage in dialogue with an individual council member, and no questions shall be asked of the individual council member." This procedure does not prohibit anybody from speaking to the council and referring to someone on the council by name. It just does what it says it does. It prohibits us from speaking to you individually and asking questions. At the October 9th meeting, I was informed by Mayor Irons that while addressing the council during public comment, I was not allowed to refer to Councilmember Heading, excuse me, by name when describing what Mr. Heading had said on the public record. This was not only a misrepresentation of the city's policy, it was an attempt by Mayor Irons to control the content of public speech, to prohibit someone from saying what they did not want to hear in public, in violation of the public's First Amendment right to free speech. Our elected officials are bound by a pledge to protect the constitutional rights, and this was less than an hour after we all pledged allegiance to the flag. And the worst part of it is that no one on the council stood up and called a point of order and informed the mayor of what our rights to free speech were, and I find that most disappointing.
Thanks, Cynthia. Next up, Dawn Addis is speaking to Item C1. So this is an item later on in the agenda that people aren't able to stay to. So here we're just getting to items that are later on in the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Dawn Addis, resident and candidate for the city council. I wanted to thank you for your hard work and dedication to the future of our city. Recently, I had the opportunity to hear from students at Moro Bay High School about our sewer. As you know, the high school sits across the street from the current facility. So given that the sewer is a regular part of our students' lives, I'd like to read a couple excerpts from letters that two of them sent to me. The first is from Kayden Diodati, who's 17 years old. "As a senior at Moro Bay High, I'm disgusted by the fact I've become accustomed to the smell of human waste at my school from the sewer plant. I also spent my youth playing soccer and baseball under the fog of this smell. I support moving forward with the city's effort to relocate the plant." And this is from Audrey, who's 17 years old. "Why does a teenager like me care about city politics? The sewer should be moved away from the beach and upgraded to reduce ocean pollution and accommodate water reclamation. Who wants to surf in sewage? And has anyone ever heard of a drought? If we further postpone, like with all things, my generation will pay a higher price." Number two from Audrey, "Water security. I'm an advocate of water conservation, yet I would also like to know that there will be a water supply in the future for us to conserve." So with that, I'd like to come back to my own comments and urge you to move forward with the contract with Philan, Black &amp; Beach for design and construction of the new water reclamation facility. And then finally, I would also like to express my support for Moro Bay to host the Highway One stage finish of the Amgen Tour. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Jeffrey Morgan for Item C2.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm here to voice my support for having the Amgen Tour have a stop here in Moro Bay. My wife and I were lucky enough to purchase a house out here about four years ago, and one of the main reasons we chose Moro Bay was because of the diversity that tourism brings to our area, and I think there's nothing more diverse than a worldwide event happening right in my front yard. So I would be very, very excited to see that event happen. I would also like to voice my support for moving forward with the water reclamation plan. I'm a Moro Bay High School graduate, and I can attest to the smells there, and so that would be a great benefit. Also, as a Los Osos former resident, I know of the kind of pain that a community can go through when they're fighting a battle over something like that, and so I've been very appreciative of your approach to how you've done things so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, David Albrecht. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for coming out.
At the risk of piling on here, my name's David Albrecht. I'm the past president and a current board member for the San Luis Obispo Bicycle Club. By way of introduction, the San Luis Obispo Bicycle Club has a strong connection to the City of Moro Bay. Our annual lighthouse ride starts and ends at Moro Bay High School, and that ride also allows us to make a substantial donation to the Athletic Booster Organization. Also, if you notice, the bike rack outside this building was donated by the bicycle club a couple of years ago. But I'm here tonight to strongly encourage the city council to approve the funding necessary for the City of Moro Bay to be a stage finish location for the 2019 Tour of California Bicycle Road Race. 2019 will be the 14th installment of the tour, which has become an international event that rivals the Tour de France. Over the years, there has been a natural fit between the tour and our county. We have a strong local bicycle culture and a scenic location that lends itself to international television coverage. Finish stages provide just what Moro Bay needs, an influx of tourists and visitors who will line downtown streets to view the finish and then spend, hopefully, their hard-earned money at your restaurants, your motels, and your businesses. The Tour of California is likely the most significant and well-attended spectator event to occur in our county, so I, Matt Vane, I ask you to please appropriate the necessary funding and consider that funding an investment rather than expenditure, an investment in your efforts to bring increased tourism to Moro Bay. Thanks very much for your attention.
Thanks, David. Next up, Gary Havas, and this is also for Item C2, an item that I won't be able to stay for at a later date, later time.
Greetings, Mayor Irons, city council and staff. My name's Gary Havas. I'm from San Luis Obispo. I am here for myself to say that I would like to see the support for the Amgen Tour go on. I'm also a board member for Bike Slow County. Please support the use of the T-Bid funds as recommended by staff. The opportunities to showcase Moro Bay, attract visitors, involve volunteers, and spotlight cycling, and all of its benefits is not to be missed. I will be volunteering at the Bike Falet for Bike Slow County and hope to valet your bicycle at this event or other events Bike Falet supports in Moro Bay, say the avocado and margarita festival, and what everybody else said. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Rick Ellison.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council staff. My name's Rick Ellison. I'm the Executive Director of Bike Slow County, a new position for me. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to support the allocation of funds for the Amgen Tour to have a finish site in Moro Bay. Moro Bay is known as a cycling community that attracts visitors from around the world on a regular basis, as well as all the local cyclists who come and enjoy Highway One as well as the downtown and all the cycling pleasures that come in this area. For Bike Slow County, we're very pleased to support the allocation of funds and to have a finish site in your community. This is a great event. It is, for the United States, it is the cycling event of the year, and having Moro Bay being featured on television locally for tourism, the economic development, it will have an indelible impact on the cycling community and the tourist community, economic development, and betterment for all of safe riding for all. So thank you.
Thank you. And with that, that concludes all our speaker slips for public comment and all closed public comment. Thank you. Just want to just respond for the record. As far as Code of Civility, just the history on that, and they asked to agendize that. Actually, Dana, is that the most current Code of Civility that's in the back of the vets hall? So there is a resolution in the back of the vets hall that the city adopted, not once but twice. That's the second one. So the Code of Civility is in our Policies and Procedures, so we have already adopted that. The Code of Civility from the county mayors, that came after our own Code of Civility, so we actually have one in our Policies and Procedures. So I just want to make that clear. That's all I have. Is there anything else from public comment? No? Okay. All right, with that, we'll move on to the next item. Next up on the agenda, we have our consent item, and I don't have any speaker slips for anything on consent. Anybody for consent? No? We'll close public comment for consent. We have four items on consent. I want to pull Item A3, but are there any other items to be pulled? None? I would make a motion to approve all items on the agenda with the exception of Item A3.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
So I made the motion, the second was by Mr. Davis.
Oh, you made the motion.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. So motion by Mayor Irons, second by Councilmember Davis. And any discussion on the three items on consent to be approved? None? All in favor of approving Items A1, 2, and 4? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Item A3. Marlese, did you have some comments on some specifics on that as well?
Basically, I just noticed some typos, and I thought they should be corrected in the final version since it is a formal policy statement, so I sent those to Jenna.
Okay, so we want to make sure that the typos are part of the motion as far as correcting those?
Yes.
Are there any specifics that we... Just minor, non-content?
Minor.
Okay, all right. And then I just wanted to speak to the T-Bid portion of this policy, and we did receive some comment at our last meeting during this about considering adjusting the T-Bid reserve policy to 10%. The recommendation was 25. It went to our T-Bid Board, their recommendation was 25 as well. I just wanted to, with council consensus, I would agree to the recommendation by staff as agreed to by our T-Bid Board, but I would recommend that this policy be reviewed during the first year, after the first year, and when we approve the T-Bid agreement. And I'm looking to you, Jen, about the particular... So when we bring back our T-Bid municipal code, we do that annually to approve that. So is there anything in there that would... Is this too complex?
So if I'm hearing you correctly, we would do the regular process in 2019, come back with the T-Bid budget, discuss what's in the accumulation fund and how that compares to the 20% to 25% funding level, and then in 2020 revisit that 20% to 25% funding level and have a discussion if we want to maintain that or revisit the 10%.
Yeah. Okay. At that point, I know all these are, you know, all these are living documents for us to consider, but considering some of the input on that, my request with council support would be to revisit this in a year as described by our finance director, to consider whether 25% or 10% is the right spot, and we'll have an opportunity to do that. So that would be my request.
I concur.
I think it'd be appropriate to look at all of them.
I think we'll do that during the budget process, but this particular one was tied specifically to the 10% and 25%, which was part of the discussion during that time. And just looking for some either consensus on that, red, okay on that. So that's the only... So the motion would be to approve this, but with the direction to staff to review the T-Bid portion of the reserve policy year following our annual approval of the T-Bid resolution. And that would be the motion.
To review it and bring it back to council for information or just to review it?
It would be reviewed during the T-Bid resolution that's approved every year.
Got you. Thank you. Second, the motion.
Okay. So the motion is to approve Item A3 per staff recommendation with the edits as provided by Ms. McPherson, and that will be the motion, and then we can just confirm the direction from that.
Okay.
Okay, and so any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. So then basically, the other part of the motion was just to ensure... The motion would be to bring back the T-Bid reserve policy during the annual resolution to adopt the T-Bid municipal code. And that would be the motion for that. And I don't even know if we need a motion for that. This is just direction, and I'm looking towards our city attorney and city manager on that. We don't necessarily need a motion on this. This is just direction?
No, you don't need a motion on that.
Okay, all right. We have consensus on that direction, though. Okay, great. With that, that'll conclude our consent, and do we need a recess, or do you want to move on to Item C1? Okay? Item C1? Okay. Item C1, approval of contract with Philan, Black &amp; Beach for design and construction of the new water reclamation facility. Mr. Collins, do you want to introduce the item?
If you just give us a minute, we're going to get a setup here.
Okay.
So...
Can you guys sit over here?
I think he's going to sit. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is C1, approval of a contract to Black &amp; Beach Philan's for the design build of the Moro Bay Water Reclamation Facility. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Eric Caseras, our Water Reclamation Facility Program Manager, for presentation, followed by questions, public comment, and ultimately, we recommend award of the contract. Eric?
Thank you, Rob. Mr. Mayor, Council, Eric Caseras with the city's WRF program management team. As Rob mentioned, we're here tonight to talk about Item C1. We just have a brief presentation we're going to run through, about 10 slides. Ultimately, we'd like the council to take action tonight in awarding a contract to the Philan, Black &amp; Beach team for design and construction of the new water reclamation facility and authorize a mayor to execute an agreement in the amount of $67,234,512. Wanted to just talk a little bit about the design build procurement process, so some of these slides you've seen before, but I thought it was important just to kind of walk through the process the city's been going through for really over the last more than a year. So just a quick background, obviously, the water reclamation facility is one of three major projects that comprises the city's WRF program and construction of the new wastewater treatment facility. But again, we're focused tonight on the... That was out. The water reclamation facility itself. So beginning in the fall of last year, the city undertook a multi-stage procurement for the design builder for the WRF facility. So the first step was soliciting letters of interest from a number of different companies. So I'd... So at that point, the city had received about a half dozen letters of interest, that was kind of the first stage. The next stage was an RFQ that was sent out to the folks that had indicated they were interested in pursuing the project. From there, the city received a total of four statements of qualification from the ACOM Lyles, Philan Black and Beach, Parsons Sunt, and Kiwet Tetra Tech teams. The city decided to invite all of those four qualified firms to submit proposals and ultimately receive proposals from two firms, the ACOM Lyles team and the Philan Black and Beach team. So, the request for proposal document, as you may remember, was pretty comprehensive. It asked for a number of different items from the, the four teams that were deemed qualified to submit a proposal, looking at for background information on, on the, on the team, their proposed scope of work, their, the project's technical requirements, submitted requirements, proposal, evaluation criteria and selection process. That was issued back in January of 20, excuse me, January 24th of this year. There were a couple voluntary proprietary meetings that the city offered to, to the individual teams to meet, and ultimately, two proposals were received in, on May 8th of 2018. The city went through a pretty rigorous evaluation process, as you may remember, the Corolla team was brought on board in, in mid to late April, so this is one of the first elements of the program that we were involved in. The evaluation process was again in accordance with the RFP requirements, there was a number of requirements there. We held interviews with each of the two firms that submitted proposals that lasted about an hour and a half, and the evaluation team ultimately consisted of not only ourselves as the program team and city staff, but also, and we engaged the WRF CAC, WRF Subcommittee members as well, to weigh in on the evaluation. What I've got up here is the evaluation results from the two teams. Again, this was something that was presented back in June of this year, and you can see the Philan Black and Beach team had the highest score of the two, the two firms that submitted This is just a timeline that shows you, really, this process started back in October of 2017. We got all the way to June 13th, which is when we brought the recommendation to you to select, or the Philan Black and Beach team as the preferred proposer, and to authorize the city to enter into the negotiation process. So I have a couple of slides here that talk a little bit about the contract negotiations. Really, we've spent the last roughly three months with spending a lot of time with the Philan Black and Beach team negotiating the contract. Really, it can be broken down, our efforts can be broken down on this particular item into kind of two main components. One is the contractual components. Again, the Corolla team did not write the request for proposals that was submitted, and so it took us a little bit of time to get familiar with that document and really work through that document with the city attorney, as well as the Philan Black and Beach team that had requested some, some modifications and some considerations as part of their proposals. So there was a big contractual piece that went on pretty continuously for the last three months, as you can imagine with a contract of this size. There was a lot of work there, we worked collaboratively there. And then on the technical piece. So again, this is a state-of-the-art facility that's going to produce potable reuse quality water, and so we had a number of technical questions, having just recently come on board, we wanted to talk through with the Philan Black and Beach team. So we had a number of kind of informal meetings, and then we had a major workshop on August 21st and 22nd, just about two months ago. And then, we spent a lot of time with city staff as well, vetting a lot of the equipment manufacturers for some of the major pieces of equipment, because that's one of the major, major items that we were concerned with as we move forward and making sure we have the right equipment manufacturers that the, the design build team will be going back out to as we start through this design process. So ultimately, we've come up with an agreement that the, the city and Philan Black and Beach, the city staff and Philan Black and Beach, agree to. And in terms of next steps, so if you were to approve that contract tonight, what are we really looking at? What's going to happen through this contract? This contract's a little bit unique in that there's two separate notice to proceeds. So typically, council is awarded, awards a contract, and then the Public Works Director executes a notice to proceed, and then we go down and we, and the work is completed. In this case, it's a, it's a staged process where there's an initial notice to proceed that's, that's given for the design process. We're thinking that might happen right around November 1st, if we have a, an award of contract this evening. Then we start the design phase. There's three individual deliverables that have been identified in the design phase, with the heaviest focus on the 30% design submittal. It's really the, the system confirmation, where we really determine what's going to be built, ultimately, if there's any changes to what's going to be built and what was proposed in the proposal once we get into a lot of the details. So that document is looking like it's going to be delivered sometime in late January or February of next year. Then we have the 60% submittal in July, and then the 90% submittal in November. Based on the schedule that we have so far, we're looking at issuing a construction notice to proceed in about the beginning of fiscal year 1920, in July of this upcoming year, with a substantial completion roughly 25 months later, in August of 2021. A couple of months after that, we have final completion, and I can get into the, what these different, these different milestones mean, where essentially, the, the project is completed, all the punch list items and everything have been taken care of. And then we have another step, which is contract completion. So, one of the things that's identified in the RFP is that the design build team has to sign up for the O&amp;M costs of the facility, so they have to guarantee the O&amp;M costs for the facility. And so, after final completion, the, the facility's operated for a period of roughly seven months to prove out those O&amp;M estimates that were provided by the Philan Black and Beach team. And then there's, there's penalties there if, if the, the O&amp;M costs aren't within a certain, certain proximity to what was promised and what's, what's actualized over that seven month period. So those are kind of the major milestones. That's pretty much what I have on my, my presentation. Again, recommendation is to award a contract to the Philan Black and Beach in the amount With that, any questions?
Great, thanks, Eric. With that, we'll open up for questions from council. Following the questions, we'll open up for public comment, and then close public comment and bring them back for deliberation. Marleus, you want to start us off on questions?
Sure, thank you, thank you. Yeah, I have a few questions. The first one is just a very general one. I noticed that the contract was very, very detailed, lots of detail in it, and I'm just wondering if it's a standard document, or is this something that was prepared specifically by our attorneys for this project?
It's a document that was, that was prepared specifically for this project, but the, the document is fairly standard for this type of a project, I guess. So it's, it wasn't necessarily something that was taken off the shelf, but it's not something that wouldn't be unlike another, another project like this.
Okay. And I noticed for the first time, Overland Contracting Incorporated, which was a, a new company name that had not appeared before, and can you explain who they are and how they relate to the project?
Sure. Overland Contracting is the construction arm, or the construction subsidiary of the Black, of the Black and Beach Company. They've been referred to as Black and Beach throughout this process, throughout, in their proposal and everything else, more just the familiarity with, with Black and Beach, but it's essentially, it's essentially the folks from Black and Beach that are going to be working on this project.
Okay, in conjunction also with Philan?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And I'm curious about the relationship between this contract and the GSI study that's being done, and how that might impact the actual design of the project? And so, when would, when would that study be done, and when will we know how that might impact the contract?
So, the GSI should be getting started with work here in the next several weeks, that agreement's being close to being finalized as we speak. They provided in their proposal a, a schedule of about nine to 12 weeks to get to a final report for their Phase 1 work. So as you'll remember, they had kind of a multi-phased, there was a multi-phases of that work. There was an initial mod flow modeling work to, to answer some of the major questions that we have in terms of how much water we want to be treating and putting into the lower Morro Basin. And then, some of the other questions had to do with the optimization of the injection wells and those kinds of things, which include identifying the well locations, doing pilot wells, and some other things. So that's a long, a more longer-term activity, but the first activity is about nine to 12 weeks.
And does it impact at all this contract? Meaning, would this contract change based on the results that we get from GSI?
It, it could. So the, the RFP had quoted, or included a capacity of 825 acre feet per year. That's the production of, of potable reuse water from the facility. So about 75% of the water that passed through the facility would be treated to that potable reuse standard and would go into groundwater injection. And if you remember, that 825 acre feet number goes back to the previous study that GSI had done, the feasibility study that was completed back in the fall of last year? All these studies are starting to run together a little bit. Fall of last year, and that was one of the more conservative estimates for the injection. So, GSI's work comes back, identifies that potentially we could reduce that amount, then that would be something that we would work into the, the scope of the project as part of this 30% design submittal.
So it could reduce the, the contract amount by somewhat if we don't?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, but we don't know by how much at this point?
Not yet.
Okay. And I noticed there's reference to the city's construction manager, and I'm curious to know, is, is that somebody that we plan to hire? Is that you? Is that somebody on staff already?
So, the way that our contract is structured, us, the Corolla as a program manager, is that we have a long-term contract, we identified a number of different work elements, and one of the work elements was the construction oversight of the design build work, as well as the construction management for the other components of the work. So, I think likely, we would be performing that work. The way that that, the way that that would work is our contract, next phases of contract are negotiated for each fiscal year. So we would come back in the spring of next year and start negotiating, or we would negotiate with staff, and an amendment for our agreement would come to you in the spring of next year that would include that construction management. So it would be somebody from the Corolla Program Management Team, not me specifically, but somebody, somebody from our team.
And is that the person that would coordinate with the other aspects of the project, so that, I assume that's a city responsibility to coordinate with the lift stations and the pipelines and the recycling components, along with the Philan Black and Beach?
So, that, that responsibility would continue to fall on, for, on me as the, the program manager, and so the construction manager is one person that would be under our team. So, along with members of the city team, I would be working with them to oversee all of this. We would have a construction oversight person. With design build, sometimes the, the verbiage is a little bit different, but essentially the construction manager, construction oversight person, we would have one person on our team that would oversee that. And then, as the other components of the program move forward, the lift stations and pipelines for the conveyance, there'd be another, potentially another construction oversight person for that, or construction management person for that, and then potentially for the injection wells as well. But there's probably going to be some cross, some cross pollination of that construction management or oversight staff.
Okay. And is the start of the project at all affected by our ability to get the loan approvals? Is there any relationship? Can we start without the loan approvals?
So that's a good question, and that's one of the reasons why we have this staggered notice to proceed. And so, the city has the $10.3 million SRF planning loan that it hasn't currently drawn, drawn down at all, as well as cash on hand to be able to fund the design effort that will run through, will continue to run through, through the end of next year, essentially. So that face, that piece can be funded. The city also likely has enough cash on hand to fund the first part of construction, and ideally, under an ideal situation, we would be signing a loan agreement with WIFIA. Again, WIFIA has our, we have our complete WIFIA application into them, they're currently reviewing that, the environmental piece specifically, at this point in time. Through our conversations with them, they've indicated that potentially sign loan agreement in the spring of next year. Our SRF application will be into the state by the end of this year, the end of this calendar year, and hopefully, within six to 12 months, we'll have a signed loan agreement with them. Those two things together would allow us to then move forward with the construction without needing any additional, any, any additional financing. So we'd be able to, to be able to run the design and the first part of the construction effort with cash on hand, with our SRF planning loan. And that's ideally how we would, how we would work this.
Great. And can you tell, and, and this is for the benefit of those people that may be listening, what the incentives are in the contract for any cost savings, in case they, those should occur? How, how would that happen? And how's, what are, what are the incentives for Philan Black and Beach to actually achieve cost savings, since this is a maximum amount of the, of the contract?
Sure. So, I guess one, one point of clarification is the, the maximum amount is the 67,512, and you know what I mean? That's a not-to-exceed amount, but again, they are paid for the work that they do, and so it's all, it's all open book, so again, the amount that, below that, that's the GMP that we carry into construction, and it's the GMP that continues forward, that's essentially the, anything less than that, based on how much it costs them to do the work, is what they would get paid. Any cost savings that they specifically identify? So this wouldn't apply to something like if we find out in two months that we want to downsize the IPR component of the project by a little bit? The city would see those savings, we would negotiate those savings with, with the Philan Black and Beach team, but any savings that they bring to us, then they're, it's a 50-50 cost sharing between them and the city.
So there is an incentive?
There is an incentive for them to find cost savings, yes.
Right. And we received some emails in, from citizens. One of them had to do with the extent to which we are going to encourage hiring locally and using local businesses, and I'm wondering if you could address that issue?
Yeah, I think one of the things that is going to be a challenge here locally is there's going to be a number of these types of projects going on at the same time. So obviously, the Cayuga Sanitary District has a, has a fairly sizable project that they're doing just to the north of us here, and the city of San Luis Obispo is also going to be starting a project that's going, I think they're going to start advertising that project right around the first of the year. I want to say that project is somewhere in the $100 million range. Again, it's a wastewater treatment plant upgrade project. So I think that it's going to be difficult to find skilled labor, local skilled labor, as it always is here in, in this region of the state, from my, my past experience. There is no project labor agreement requirement that was identified in the RFP, so there's no requirement for, for local labor. Again, that's something else that we can, we can investigate as we move forward with the other components of the project. So the, I believe, along with city staff, that the pump stations and pipelines actually lend themselves a little bit better to some local labor because of the size of those projects. We can break those projects up a little bit, and we have contractors that can do that linear type of, linear type of work in pump stations of that size, and then the injection well piece as well, might be more suited to, to public labor.
But we're certainly not adverse to advertising and, and looking for local labor or utilizing local businesses if we can?
No, absolutely, absolutely not. And, and there's, and it's a little bit of a challenge to also find the, the materials source, a lot of, some of the materials locally, again, these are fairly specialized pieces of, a lot of the equipment is fairly specialized and would be coming out of the area.
Okay.
Just let me add on to that a little bit regarding the hiring of local labor and subcontractors, so the, because it'll be partially state and federally funded, there is a disadvantaged business requirement as part of this project, and the contractor will have to make a good faith effort to try to hire these smaller firms as subcontractors to, so they'll advertise in local trade journals, the paper, with the local hiring halls to, for subcontract work on that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And my last question, again, this was brought forward, and it concerns the relationship between who's permitting the project and who's in charge of final approvals, whether it's the Coastal Commission, the city, or the county, since it's county land. And could you just clarify that for the person who asked?
Yeah, I can address the, so the city, we're still working out exactly how the project's going to, for conditional use permitting purposes. Obviously, the site sits currently in the county. We've been actively working with the county on the CUP process. There's also been talk of it going directly to the Coastal Commission for permitting. We haven't had, we don't have that piece of it worked out yet.
So let me just add a little bit more to that. Currently, it is in the county. The county's LCP does anticipate wastewater treatment facilities on that type of zone property. So Coastal thinks maybe an easier path is to permit through the county. The county has no desire to issue building permits on the project. They would like us to annex the property prior to issuance of building permits. So I've seen this happen in other cities with other projects. So we'll go through the entitlement process through the county, and then annexation prior to building permits, we would issue the building permits here in the city. The city council's ultimately in charge of the project, whether it moves forward or not. So you have the final say over the project itself. The permitting authority will probably reside in several places. The city will be permitting the lift station and forced mains. The county may be permitting the facility, and Coastal Commission could be permitting any outfall modifications that are needed, because that's in original jurisdiction.
Is the property itself within the coastal zone?
Yes, it is. It's within the appeals jurisdiction, so any decision by the county could be appealed to Coastal. That's why we're talking about a consolidated permit. There potentially could be three coastal permits issued, and Coastal's not opposed to a consolidated permit where they would act over all three of those. Just still working on the details of that.
Okay, thank you.
And can I clarify? The annexation would just be for the portion of that property that would be satisfied?
The 27.3 acres that we would have for the facility.
Right, right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, John?
Thank you. Eric, thank you for talking with me earlier. I know there were a few things we needed to follow up on, so I'll begin going through that. The pages that I refer to will be the pages of the agenda, not the pages of the contract. So starting out with page 48 of the agenda, question I had there, under section 322, second paragraph, utilize the management information system, et cetera, to provide information to the city's project management team. I just wondered if there would be clarification on how council will be reported to with regard to this information?
Sure, I can address that. So one of the things that we're currently working on is, again, our contract for our current services, the program management team, runs through, when we originally went through it in April, runs through the end of this calendar year. We're working on the amendment for those services right now that would take us from essentially the end of this year through the beginning of the next fiscal year. One of the items that we have in there is a monthly update to the city council, so we anticipate developing a monthly progress report that will show how each component of the project is doing. So the design-build project, the pipeline and pump station project that's currently in design, but will plan likely go to construction at the end of 2019, and then the status of the injection project as well. So we would report on the scope, schedule, and the budget for each of those elements every month with a report, and then we would also be making a presentation to council. The idea is that we would take information from the Feline Black and Beach team, and we would incorporate that into our overall program report that would come to council and that we would present to council, so that would happen on a monthly basis.
Good. And that would be, include the overall WRF finances in terms of costs and those things?
We would roll all that up. We'd have the three individual components kind of identified separately, because we have, internally, we have budgets and schedules associated with those three different components, but then we would roll that back up at a top level to report on the overall health of the program in terms of schedule and budget.
Great, thank you. Page 57 of the agenda, packet again, under section 3.6.3, there is an adjacent landowner, Mr. Mano, that has a calving operation, caffing operation, that is very close in proximity to the project. And so I wondered if you've had recent communications with the landowner, and/or if you haven't, what would be your plan in terms of notification and making sure that this section was adhered to and that there weren't interferences there? In addition to that, I also made reference previously to the skilled nursing facility, Bayside, as well as the assisted living facility, Casa de Flores, having at-risk individuals that are often outside on the patios that could be affected, and wanted to make sure that you're tucking in both of these entities that are in close proximity.
So the city has had some initial discussions with Mr. Mano. One of the things that we've talked about is getting some more regular communication with him because of his proximity to the site. So that's something that we're planning to do, is to make some regular, to reach out to him regularly to get his input. In terms of coordination with the nearby nursing facility, Mr. Mano, in regards to some of these temporary barriers and everything else, again, we reach out to them to see if there's anything in particular that we need to be mindful of there.
Good. And that's also noted on page 59 with regard to hazardous materials, but I have just no specific comment there. Page number 61, under section 3.15.3, each month, the design-build entity shall attend a payment meeting with the city's representative to agree on work completed. I know the public and myself and council, obviously, are very wanting to know and understand how costs will be reviewed, how they'll be reported, will they be available on our new system, the website? Could you just kind of respond to that with regard to that section?
Sure. Well, one of our main functions here as the program management team is to look out for the city's well-being overall, and of course, the finances for the project. So we'll be tasked every month with looking at the invoice material, the backup information from the Feline Black and Beach team. This contract is what you would call open-book pricing, so we get to see all the details of, especially in construction, when we see all the details of how things are being spent and the cost that's been accrued. One of the things that we're going to be doing very early on, within the next couple of weeks, if we award a contract this evening, is having a kickoff meeting with the Feline Black and Beach team, and one of those, one of the items that will be addressed during that kickoff meeting is how exactly our review of their invoice material is going to go. So that's kind of internally how things are going to work, but we're going to spend a lot of effort in going over those monthly invoices, the monthly invoice material, the material that backs up those. And then in terms of, once the invoices are paid, those would be published to the city's OpenGov site.
Great, thank you for that. Appreciate that. Page 62, briefly, the 3.18.1 section refers to warranties, et cetera, and guarantees for one year after the date of completion of the project. I was wondering if that also included items that might have warranties, like the membranes that are very expensive? Is it just a one-year guarantee? Or are there separate guarantees warranted by the manufacturer for those kinds of items that might go out longer?
Sure. Yeah, that's for essentially the work that's being performed by Feline Black and Beach. Any issues that arise over the, for the one-year period from completion would be something that they would help coordinate and correct with the city. There could be equipment warranties that go out past that period in terms of some of the major pieces of equipment and those kinds of things, membranes. Those might have longer warranties, and those would be things that the city would have to follow up on after that one-year period.
Great, thank you. Page 65, 3.23.1, the design-build entity and each subcontractor shall comply with all state. My suggestion would be that you might want to include county APCD, that's the County Air Pollution Control District Board, and/or local air pollution control rules, regulations, et cetera. I think specifying that might be an appropriate addition, since they are the entity, and I sit on that board, that would have oversight for that. So just a suggestion. 3.23.1, page 65, adding, after state, county APCD.
You're on 65 of 242, or 65 of?
Yeah, 65 of 242, correct, yes. Section 3.23.1, just adding that.
So clarifying, it's, right now, it says Air Pollution Control District, but actually the county air pollution, San Joaquin, or, excuse me, not San Joaquin, San Luis Obispo County Air Pollution Control District.
Yes, it actually doesn't mention that. It just says state, city, and/or local air pollution, and I'm just saying specified. It's the county APCD that has jurisdiction. Not a major point, but one that I think's important.
So just change "local" to "county APCD"?
Correct.
Who has already provided comments on the EIR and have mitigation monitoring requirements?
Saw him at the board meeting, that's why I'm so aware of that, so appreciate that.
Yeah, we should be able to do that, yeah.
Simple one. Page 81, skipping a lot moving forward. Question on that. Oh, that was already answered, I'm sorry. That's the IPR study that's being done. Thank you, Marlis, for asking that. I'll skip that and move to page 82. And my question there is under 6.16, compensable cost escalation. Given the fact that the tenure rate is rising, and I'm not sure what the ENR rate has been historically, this basically says that if the start date is delayed for up to 12 months, we're going to be on the hook for price increases if they exceed the 3.0% annual average for 12 months. Can you tell me what the ENR construction cost index has been for the last few months, or last few years, I mean? And give me a sense of how at risk we might be with regard to this?
So it's traditionally hovered around about 3%. I believe last year, it was about 3.5% for, I want to make sure I don't get the 20 cities mixed up with San Francisco, but I think San Francisco was right around 3.5% last year. So I guess this goes back to the discussion of having funding available, or having funding agreements in place to be able to move forward with construction within 12 months of now. And I think, based on our evaluation of where the city currently is with cash on hand, with the SRF planning loan, and where we'll sit next year with additional cash on hand, we should be able to get the construction notice proceed going before, 12 months after the initial notice to proceed.
Thank you for that, and that, I think, is a point worth reiterating. The concern would be if there were delays, and I know the rate study assumes a bond rate as a conservative estimate.
Correct.
And we haven't had notification, or we haven't even done our application for SRF funding, which is lower interest. My question, which is, I think, similar to Marlis', but maybe a little more detailed, would be, will we have adequate cash flow to hopefully avoid the possibility of tripping bond financing, which has costs associated with it? Also, given the fact that the tenure rate is rising as we speak, the assumption may be low in the rate study. And so my concern is, is do you think, and does Ms. Callaway think, whom I left a voicemail for earlier regarding this, that, given those variables, we will not run into a situation where we're going to have to trip the switch on a bond financing, which has costs associated with us? And to undo that would have other costs associated with it if we got the SRF funding? So I'm just trying to get, understand the cash flow.
Yeah. Ms. Callaway and I met this afternoon and talked a little bit about that. And yes, we think that, based on the SRF planning loan, and the fact that that hasn't been touched yet, and then the cash on hand and the additional cash that the city's going to be accumulating next year, we should be able to get, between now and a year, to fund, not only fund the full design component, but also the start of construction as well. Again, the hope is, and we're going to push as hard as we can to get a commitment and a signed loan agreement from SRF as quickly as possible. So the SRF program has changed the way they're doing business, essentially, within the last month or so. And it used to be kind of continually you could apply, and now they have these, the application cutoff dates. So if you want to be funded next year, your application has to be in before December 31 of this year. So we've been actively talking with our project manager there. We have staff that are already coordinating with our WIFIA staff that are looking at the environmental documents and everything, so we're in pretty good shape, and we're going to push as hard as we absolutely can to get that funding agreement signed as soon as possible.
It's good to know that, because it does inform the public who are concerned about rates, as am I, that with that SRF fund being available and potentially tapping that, that we have the time available to not have to pull the switch, so to speak, on bond financing, which would negate that additional reduction in the $41 per month average use rate to, if I recall correctly, about $34 if we got the SRF funding.
That's correct. It's about a $7 savings is what was estimated.
Good, okay.
It's also my understanding that the reason they went to a firm application date is so that they could have a number of projects they could evaluate and have those loans available for the start of that next fiscal year, which would be in July. So there'd be more certainty as for the timing of when debt would be issued by the state.
Great, good to know. Page 96, my second-to-last question, you'll be happy to know? The section at the bottom, 10.1.3, that's a tail responsibility for coverage that goes out five years. I guess I'm more accustomed to seeing 10 years. Can you speak to the potential risk if we only go out five years versus 10? Is this changeable? In your experience, what have you seen, and what are the risks associated with that tail coverage?
We discussed that this afternoon, and I'm going to have to get back to you with an answer on that specifically. I don't, again, I've seen longer tails than that. I was hypothesizing, because it's a joint venture, that there may be a shorter tail or something like that. So, yeah, we'll get back to you on the rationale for that.
I'm sure Chris will weigh in on it as well. My last question is just a generic question. Is there an early completion incentive for the design-build firm? In other words, is there any kind of financial opportunity, and I couldn't find it in the contract, if there is, for them to come in with completion early, as opposed to carrying it out to the end and realizing the full cost associated with the guaranteed price?
There is no specific incentive for early completion in the contract itself. Again, the cost that the design-build firm would be paid is for the actual cost of doing the work. So there is an incentive for them to finish the project as quickly as possible, to be able to move on to other projects and those kinds of things.
Yeah, because I guess their profit margin, if you look at, basically, what they've got is a 4% cap rate, and it would seem to me that, gosh, I would want to realize the full price in order to maximize my return. And wondering if we'd contemplate it, and you may want to think about this a little bit, if there is a way to incentivize them to come in earlier and not have that open-ended opportunity to go all the way and collect the full guaranteed amount? And so I'm not sure how you'd look at that, but I think it's something important to consider. Thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you, Eric, for speaking to me earlier today as well.
Thank you.
All right, Matt?
Yes, I do have a few questions there for you, Eric. We had some really good questions down here, so it's kind of hard to follow. Not necessarily hard to follow, but there's a lot of good information that's already been given out. And so one of my questions that has already not been covered is, in terms of publicizing the information, especially with OpenGov that's on the city's website, have you thought of the parameters or what, how it can be shown to the public, the contract? Have you thought of the parameters or what, how it can be shown to the public, the contract? Because if you just put a lot of gobbledygook out there, a lot of folks aren't going to understand it. Have you thought of the different ways to portray this contract to the public?
My understanding is, I don't believe there's a ton of detail that's on OpenGov in how information is displayed there. I think it's mostly just the actual invoice amount and those kinds of things. But, Callaway?
So with OpenGov, they'll have information on the vendor invoice to check them out. It'll be, I think with this project, we'll work to upload that monthly, at least for that component of OpenGov, so that it's more accessible to the community and the public. It's also broken down by account. So project management, for example, design-build, there's that level of detail on there. And then we do post the AP detailed check runs on our website. So there's a little bit more description there, although there's some description in OpenGov. It's just minimal.
Sure, okay, that makes sense. And then likewise, in terms of the next step, then, Eric, is in terms of showing the timeline of the different activities that will be, that are planned and how there will be costs, a person will be able to cross-check how they're being paid for and what is coming up in any particular contract, especially this one right here?
Can you repeat that?
Yes, so right now we're talking about the approval of a contract for X amount of dollars and the various items that will be done in the calendar sense under that contract. And so a member of the public would be able to see those items that are going to be done on what dates and then go back and look at Open Government and see when they were paid for and how much.
I think we have the ability to do that in OpenGov. So the information and the metrics that we're going to be developing for the performance of the actual program, we can tailor those to show the individual activities within the Black and Beach component, meaning we can show the progress of not only the design component, but the construction component. And the same goes for the other components of the program as well. So I think we can show that granularity in what we report out to, what we report out in our program software and show. And so I don't know what the capabilities of our, in OpenGov, to be able to show that if there's.
No, I guess the larger question, I guess, looking at is knowing that you, as you presented the timeline, as you look at the whole project with the timeline up until, I think, 2022, and the various steps being done. And this, and that's extra to just this contract, so I don't want to go beyond just this contract. But looking at the project part on the city's website, someone would be able to look at the project timeline within this contract and see what's supposed to be done between X amount of days. And then they theoretically could go back to Open Government and say, oh, yes, and it was paid this much.
They'll definitely be able to see the progress of the project or the anticipated, or the schedule of the project. First, the baseline schedule of the individual components and then how the schedule is actually progressing. And then I think we can do that from a financial standpoint as well.
All right, thanks, Red.
I just wanted to address Mr. Heding's previous question about, hey, the incentive for early completion? So again, completing the project early would essentially be a cost savings that was, that's identified by the design-build team. So theoretically, those cost savings that would be realized would be split 50/50 with them. So that's another incentive, that is an incentive for them to, again, reduce costs. Reduce costs being shortened schedule, expend less labor, those kinds of things, so.
Thank you. Red?
Thanks. I'd like to hear more about the component warranties. On page 62 of the agenda, the guarantee. It says, "The work will remain free of defects in workmanship and materials for a period of one year unless a longer guarantee period is specifically called for in the contract documents." We're going to have a lot of brand-new components up there. There's going to be pumps and generators and UV. And I'm not satisfied with a one-year guarantee on a project of this magnitude. So can you speak to what we should expect from all the different working parts?
We haven't gotten to that stage. I don't, not having the RFP in front of me, I don't believe we called out specific warranty periods for individual pieces of equipment. And if that was something that we included in the RFP itself?
The RFP does have requirements for guaranteed performance warranty period. I think it depends on what the component is. It could be five years, it could be 20 years. The one year is for their physical work on the plant site itself. So, you know, concrete work, building. The individual components, the membranes, the pumps, the blowers, will each have a different manufacturer's warranty period that we would deal directly with the manufacturer on, probably with the help of our maintenance staff. So a blower might be warranted for five years. If it goes out within five years, we're not going back to Philance about it. We're going directly to whoever that blower manufacturer is and working with them on replacement, like we do on existing components at various facilities that we have.
And this is customary for a, I mean, for really any construction project, design-build or design-bid-build, you'd have a very similar one-year warranty period at the end of construction when that warranty, at substantial final completion, when that warranty period would start from then until the one year, where essentially things, anything that happens would be their responsibility, either with the work that they've done or even potentially warranty items that happen with equipment during that one-year period. But then, again, for things like UV, there may be, or let's think of a good example, elements of the solids dewatering equipment would have a three-year warranty or a two-year warranty or something like that. And then in that case, after the one year, again, the city would work directly with the vendor, either the manufacturer or the manufacturer's representative to get that work done.
I'm wondering, though, who procures those components? And what guarantee do we have of their performance? Because I just don't see that in this contract. So is it in a different contract? Is it, where do we get a guarantee that we're going to get quality components that are going to last a specific period of time?
Sure, there's an exhibit that's attached to the main agreement. It's Exhibit B. I don't know if it's included in the printed version, but there is an exhibit in there that very clearly and very detailed provides a scope of work. Again, there are specific requirements for individual pieces of equipment that were provided in the RFP. The design-build team listed specific manufacturers that, through this negotiation period that we've been going through for the last several months, we've worked with city O&amp;M staff and looked at it. And based on our engineering judgment, these are pieces of equipment that will meet the intended specifications that were in the RFP and are quality pieces of equipment.
And it's not in the paper copy? You have to, and you can't click on the paper copy to open up that document.
I think in total, all of the exhibits were, I think, over.
Exhibit B on its own was 319 pages.
Yeah, so there was a lot of pages, a lot of 11 by 17 pages. So that information's available electronically.
I started opening it up about two minutes ago, and it's about a quarter of the way done. So we can maybe provide some more detail on examples once this opens up here, we can give you.
Well, I just want to be sure that that is part of the contract.
That is part of the contract.
That we're going to get the performance that we need.
Yes.
And overall, there's an overarching performance requirement for the actual facility itself. So there's a number of different, the testing, as in all of these projects, is a pretty elaborate task that happens towards the end of the project with numerous levels of testing that go on. The final testing, what we call the acceptance testing. At the end of the day, it's very clear within that Exhibit B that the facility needs to, one, meet the city's existing discharge requirements for going to the ocean. So that's very, very clear. And that's spelled out that no matter what's done here, that facility needs to be able to do that. And then, number two, it needs to be capable of meeting water that's in line with the state's requirements for the type of potable reuse that we're doing. So, you know, we have individual performance requirements for individual pieces of equipment. We'll have individual warranties for those. But as an overarching umbrella, there's those two, those two items that say, no matter what, at the end of the day, the facility needs to do this and it needs to do this. And that's what we'll be using to determine if it's meeting the overall performance requirements.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question.
All right, Red, thank you. So thanks again, Eric and Rob, Scott, for meeting with me today on this. I'll go through some of the questions that we talked about earlier, and then we'll go to public comment. So there was a section on page 54 of the document that has to do with discovery of archaeological interests. And I just wanted to have you talk us through that type of process. And do we have all the procedures in place to address those? And I just, I consider that as far as a delay for the project. So I just want to understand how it's described in this contract and what mechanisms are in place to make sure that we have all the procedures to keep the project and actually protect any of the findings, but keep the project moving?
Absolutely. So there is, was identified in the RFP and is discussed in the agreement, there's $1 million that the contractor has identified for mitigation measures that are identified in the environmental document. As you remember, in the environmental document, there was a number of different mitigation measures that were identified for cultural resources in terms of having a monitor there during the pertinent activities and those types of things. So the mitigation measures are in the environmental document and this agreement includes money within the $67 million to be able to comply with those mitigation measures. So there could be things that are unearthed during the, during the construction. And we'll have monitors there to help identify and make sure that everything is done properly if those things are identified. And then at that point, that monitor will also have a role in determining what impact it has on construction if it indeed delays construction or it doesn't delay construction. But the environmental document is something that is very thorough in that respect.
Okay, all right, great, thanks. And then the next one on page 74. We talked about the clause for American Steel and Iron. That's kind of a standard clause for this project. And your response was in that it is a standard clause. My question was, do we have the capacity? And I mean that from, you know, the United States. Does the United States have the capacity for all the infrastructure projects going on to provide for this project? And then the other, to include in that question is, would be, for any other types of things like strikes or things like that, for product delay? Is there, are there alternatives to provide the steel to keep the project going?
This is a requirement that's been in place for, I would say roughly about the last 10 years. So any project that receives state or federal funding is required to comply with the American Iron and Steel Act. Some of the problems originally when this went into became widely used, especially in our industry, is we have a lot of specialized pieces of equipment that are made out of metal, that come from very specialized places like Germany, Japan. And that's, so those are some of the only places that they're made. And so that, we've gotten over that hurdle, and that's no longer an issue. So we can get those pieces of equipment and everything that comply with that requirement. And then I would just say, in terms of the size of this project compared to other projects, I mean, I wouldn't venture to guess of how many billions of dollars of work just in our industry is going on utilizing rebar, but even more specialized things like ducted iron piping and those kinds of things. And we haven't seen a lot of, I guess, I haven't seen a lot of in my projects, projects that are of this size or similar where we've had any issues with that. Things do happen. Working on a project right now where we have a project delay because of the hurricanes that have gone on and issues with shipping and those kinds of things. And we have some delayed electrical equipment. So these things, these things can happen, not only due to American Iron and Steel, but because of other kind of natural things that happen, so.
All right, thanks. And then we talked about on page 82, the construction start date. And I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about that in the 6.16.1?
Let me get there really quickly.
Yeah, thanks.
Yes, so this goes back to Councilmember McPherson and Councilmember Heding's question. Again, we believe that we can start construction before the 12-month period because of where we're sitting financially with the planning loan and where we are with the cash on hand. So essentially, the way that this reads is if there was a delay in issuing the notice to proceed and the ENR consumer cost index went up by more than 3%, then we'd be at risk for increase in the cost of the project. But again, I think based on our discussions about cash flow, where we think we sit with WIFIA and SRF, that we can avoid, we can avoid this.
Okay. And I know you touched on it briefly earlier with some of the questions, but on my notes, I have down here, talk, process, scheduling, and the monthly updates. So that'll be important as we, one, the process as for us and the community to understand basically all the contracts that will be coming through, to understand that. The other is the schedule overall and then how we go through those updates. And I know we, in the past, we did go through monthly updates when we had them on consent. They were there for us all, you know, everyone to review. But, and that was the purpose of it. So they were visible for everybody to see. If we had any questions, obviously, we'd pull that and go through that. So what kind of updates would we get going forward?
Really, what I'm hoping for is, again, in the council package, and we're currently in the process of revamping the kind of the program management information system that we're using for the project. So project was previously using another program. We've been utilizing that somewhat as we came onboard. But as you may remember, one of the items that was in our initial scope of work was to look at the program controls, the program controls that were being done and any changes that we wanted to make to the program controls. So essentially, what we're using to track and control cost and schedule and then ultimately how we're reporting that back out. So I think one of the things that we are striving for is to make something that's very visual and very quickly at a glance you can see is, you know, something as simple as, you know, something shown in red, it means that it's not performing to schedule or it's not performing to budget. If it's green, it's good. If it's yellow, it's right on. So there's very simple graphics that we want to be able to make, to make available to the wider public and then probably a little bit more detail to council. And then through the revamped project website, we'll, through program website, we could also have even more detail for folks that want to dive into that.
Okay, great, thanks for that. At this point, I think I'll just go ahead and go to public comment. And then if there's any follow-up questions?
I just had one, I just had one quick comment. And I want to thank somebody from the Corolla team in the audience, Mr. Rohr, for sending it to me. He reminded me, Mr. Heding, that we did, we did talk about the five-year tail as it relates to in the contract. And it was something that was actively negotiated between the city engineer and the Black and Beach and Phelan attorneys. Ultimately, we ended up with five years. Our recollection is, again, it goes back to, it's a little bit onerous for a JV to have the tenure, maybe for a single entity. The tenure would have been, would have been good. But then, again, it was something that was mutually negotiated between the city's attorney and the design-build team's attorneys.
Okay, great, thanks for that clarification. And with that, we'll go to public comment. First, Dan Sedley, and then Meredith Bates.
Hello, my name is Dan Sedley, resident of Morro Bay. I want to express my appreciation for Mr. Heding's comments and concerns in regards to the smells, chemicals, et cetera, that the seniors in the senior home may be exposed.
Dan, can you speak into the mic, please? Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if it's tall enough.
Yeah, I know.
Could I request accommodation, sir? I'm not sure that the seniors have been adequately accommodated in terms of the plans being made. I've heard the subject danced around tonight. This could be done, that could be done. But I think Mr. Heding's concern that he stated is still a very. But I think Mr. Heading's concern that he stated is still a very, very well-taken point, that these people need to be protected. They're health-wise very sensitive, much more than even our high school population, and they should be protected. And that should be assured and not danced around before this project is begun. I am opposed to awarding the Black and Beach contract primarily because the Morro Bay City Council is still refusing to count approximately 1,000 protest votes to the rate in sewer increase. I believe this is a violation of the democratic republic that we live in and offends many Morro Bay residents. As has been commented earlier tonight, legal actions are being pursued until the votes are counted and verified. In order to avoid such possibilities, it would seem economically advantageous to count the votes before proceeding with the project. Lastly, the city council is proposing to spend $67 million in a contract with Black and Beach. The city council is in essence a lame duck city council. It would make sense to delay contracts pending, swearing in the new city council whom would be responsible to carry out oversight of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Next up, Meredith Bates. Thanks, Jesse.
I'm not that tall. Good evening, council, mayor, staff. I'm Meredith Bates from Morro Bay. I'm really impressed with the questions you're answering, you're asking. This is a big project and I think, it sounds to me like you've really studied and read. And I know there's a lot of information for you to consider and I appreciate that. Couple of things, I did send an email earlier that I hope you all got. A couple of things I'm concerned about and, John Heading, you brought up a good point about an incentive for early completion. Sometimes I've seen not only an incentive for early completion, but some kind of a, I don't want to say punishments, but something for late completion that would be an incentive in the opposite direction for people to complete the project on time. There's a couple other things that I wanted you to consider. In section 3.24, letter A, it talks about a public notice. And it doesn't really say what that means. I don't know if that means something in the newspaper, in the classifieds, or if that's going to be on the city website. But I would like to know more about exactly what that means. I think that would be helpful. Marlis, you already mentioned the local hiring. Thank you. I understand that professional people might be difficult to come by in this county. However, I know there'll be a lot of support staff and small contracts and I'd like to see something about that in the agreement. Also, local procurement, if there's things that we can get locally, I know some of the components are going to be only available outside our area. It would really help our local economy if we could shop locally for this construction and the design. Another question I had was about something Mr. Livick mentioned about the disadvantaged businesses. So I wanted to look up more about that. So I looked at the website that was given the link in the contract. And it's not a direct link to the information that I was looking for. It's the general EPA website. And I wanted to know how to find the specific information about the disadvantaged businesses and I couldn't find that. Then there's another reference to CRF section 3, 3.301, and I don't know what that relates to. You've also said a lot of acronyms about letters tonight and I have no clue about what many of them mean. So hopefully you could help explain some of those as they come up. Thank you.
Thanks, Meredith. Next up, Cynthia Hawley and then Carolyn Brinkman.
Cynthia Hawley, I oppose approving this expenditure tonight. First of all, because the project does require three permits and that's been danced around tonight, too. And you folks have put off the permitting process until after you proposed to spend $67 million of the public money without even, you have effectively evaded the permitting process because that process is the one that the public has a right to participate in. And you know that because you do it all the time with other public, with other construction projects, with the development projects. The person comes in and applies for a permit and then the council goes over it in public and the public has a right to participate in the development of the project design through that process. This project design has been made without public input. You've had workshops, but that is not public participation in the design process. Another thing is that the project design in a public permitting process is a stable project design. If you want to change the project design, you have to come back and get a permit to change it. That's not what's going on here. You're spending $67 million to plow ahead for people to start construction in less than 12 months. And I don't know when you're going to figure you're going to do the permitting process during that time because we get a chance to participate in it. But nonetheless, it's just going to be a sham because it doesn't make any difference. You're already proceeding with the project. And I want to know what is going to happen with these sewer pipes that we spent, we agreed to pay $7.6 million in 2015 to have them repaired. And that money has never been spent on that project. And so what you're talking about is injecting money into that basin, which is already polluted by the sewer pipes that need to be fixed. And I also want to know what's going to happen to this project if the basin doesn't have storage, actual storage, because it's an underground flow. The city's own projects or the own reports say that it's an underground flow. And how would that affect the project if the water injected in there didn't stay there? Just flowed underground to the ocean continually and it didn't provide any new water? How would you deal with that? And I'd also like to know what would happen if the WIFIA money doesn't come through? What would be the impact on this project, I mean, on this contract? And also, I know that Black and Beach is a holding company. And holding companies have a lot of corporations under them and there's other corporations under that holding company called Black and Beach. And I would like to know which one that is and I'd like to know if it's an international corporation.
Thanks, Cynthia. Next up, Carolyn Brinkman.
Good evening, mayor, city council, staff. I too really appreciated the depth of your questions and to the answers to your questions answered some of mine, so I appreciate that. I was wondering whether WORF CAC had a chance to look at this contract. I noticed that the last three meetings were canceled. And that concerns me because that group is a citizens advisory committee and it's made up of people who represent voices from the community. So I was a little bit concerned about that. Also, I, Marlis asked the question about who these different entities were in the contract. And I was very confused also because at one point in the contract, it stated that Black and Beach would be a subcontractor. But as far as I can see, it's the general contractor. So that was, that is a little bit confusing. I too had the question about what would happen if the WIFIA loan were not funded. And I noticed that on page 82, we looked at 6.16.1. But we didn't look at 6.16.2, which says, "If the contract date is delayed beyond 12 months after the contract is awarded, the city and the design-build entity, DBE, will negotiate a mutually fair and reasonable adjustment to the cost plus with guaranteed-to-exceed amount of the contract." And if the WIFIA loan is not funded, what would be the effect on that? And also, if there is a lawsuit, what would be the effect on 6.16.2? So if you could answer those questions, I would appreciate it.
Thanks, Carolyn. Jim Soderborg?
Yes.
Sorry, Jim. You can pronounce that for me.
Hi, my name is Jim Soderborg. I'm a new resident to the city of Morro Bay. And it's exciting to see how our city council, staff and the community in general is going to move forward with this project, together, hopefully. And I do have a contractual question. Bankruptcy, legal actions, you know, things happen, as we know. And my question is, has it been determined who owns the design, the work and any intellectual property that may arise out of a project of this size in this time thing? I think it's very important that it's stated, the ownership, not just implied by monies moving back and forth, so on and so forth. There's a lot of opportunity here, especially if things go awry, to make sure that we or the city owns and has the ability to use what it's paid for. So that's just a simple point. Make sure that the ownership of these things is designated and who owns what. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Welcome to Morro Bay. That concludes all the speaker slips that I have. And with that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. So there, hopefully you're chronicling a lot of those questions as well. And I'll look for staff to help navigate through those and then we'll get through some deliberation, particularly the last one. I recall the intellectual property was part of the contract, but there are many contract, many questions in there. And I'll just look for Eric and Rob and all of you to help us get through some of the questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple here that I wrote down and then I think I will ask Mr. Livick and Mr. Graham maybe to answer a couple on some of the permitting as well as the city attorney. One, Ms. Bates asked about a kind of a penalty for not completing the project on time or what we call liquidated damages. So there are provisions in the contract for up to $5,000 a day for liquidated damages. So that is something, not only are we talking about early completion and incentives there, but we talk about some punitive issues for not completing the project on time. So that was one thing that was discussed. I'll skip the permitting one for now and talk to a couple of items that Ms. Hawley brought up. One has to do with the sewer pipes. So as you remember, the recent rate study included the cost for the replacement of the Main Street, the Main Street pipes north of Tascadero Road, as well as recent one water plant identified and prioritize those as the focus for the collection system improvements that would happen kind of outside of the WORF program. So I can just, I just wanted to highlight that briefly. In terms of, when we talk about potable reuse and the ability to inject water into the aquifer and to meet the requirements of DDW, DDW is very clear in terms of the requirements as when water's injected into the basin, you need to have a minimum of two months' travel time between when that water is injected and when it would be intercepted by any of the city's potable wells. And so as you remember, the feasibility study identified a couple of different locations that were during both dry and wet weather conditions would be able to meet those requirements. So again, water's injected, sits in the ground for a period of time, flows towards the wells, towards the ocean and the wells pick up that water before it heads out, heads out to the ocean. In terms of Black and Beach, the holding company, I'll have to report back on that. In terms of, I believe they're an international company and the holding company or other subsidiaries and everything. I don't have the details there. A couple of Mrs. Brinkman's comments to 1616.2, which essentially says, work, the city and the design builder would work towards if we did delay construction over the 12-month period and we did have any E and R increase of over 3%. And again, it does open up the ability for the design-build contractor to negotiate with the city for an increase in their guaranteed maximum price. So as you understand, the design builder has now, was asked for a price back in, you know, essentially they started putting together that price back in January 24th of this year. So they've had to come up with a price that they can hold for a certain period of time. Again, we have things like escalation. As Mr. Heading indicated, the cost of construction is going up. So it's understandable and it's something a closet goes into, design-build, design-bid-build, conventional design-build contracts, about how long a contractor will hold their price because they have things like escalation and everything else working against them. So again, not something unusual to see in a contract, a contract like this. No WIFIA. Again, we're pretty confident about the WIFIA loan. If something were to happen with WIFIA, then the city would have to, my, looking into a crystal ball, would say that the city would have to press SRF for additional funds to be able to stay under the $41 surcharge per month. That would be the main course of action. Obviously, we're looking for other opportunities, other grant opportunities and such. But for the bulk of funding, I think it would be likely SRF or maybe another entity out there that we haven't really looked at. It's much more difficult to go after, but would be USDA or something like that. So those, again, those things would be explored in the future. I don't, not sure if I want to answer the lawsuit question. I can answer it somewhat. But again, the city's currently funding the activities of Phelan, Black and Beach with either cash on hand or an SRF planning loan. And so the initial activities of that team could be funded through those funding sources, which I don't believe would be impacted by any kind of lawsuit. But I would, again, I'll let the city attorney kind of touch that one. So I think the only one I wanted to, the main one I wanted to have Mr. Graham and Mr. Livick talk to is kind of the permitting, maybe the permitting piece a little bit.
And before we go into that, isn't on page 42 of 242, the very beginning of the document, calls out Overland as a contracting, is a Delaware corporation. It names out every single corporation and where they're, it says, Overland Contracting Company from Delaware Corp, is a Delaware corporation. Phelan is, where is it? Phelan is from a California corporation. The other one is located in Walnut Creek. Is that not what?
Well, Overland, I mean, I think when it goes back to one of the questions that Ms. McPherson asked was, or Councilmember McPherson asked was, Overland Contracting, Inc. is a subsidiary of Black and Beach.
And our contract is with these companies that states where they're from? Where their corporations are held?
It's a joint venture of those two companies, correct.
Okay. And then the other questions we had.
So regarding, talk a little bit about permitting. But before I get there, I want to clarify something. It was mentioned that the pollution of the groundwater basin is caused by leaking sewer pipes. We've gone through many meetings with the Regional Water Quality Control Board to determine the cause of nitrate contamination in the moro aquifer. And it's caused by upstream agricultural pollution. And the findings of the regional board, while they agree that those pipes need to be repaired, they need to be repaired for infiltration issues, not exfiltration issues. Now, that being said, I can't guarantee a drop of sewage that leaves those pipes does not make it into the aquifer. So, but the majority contamination is caused by upstream agriculture. Permitting, I think we touched on that a little bit before. The site is currently located in the county. We're in the process of working on a permit application with the county for a coastal development permit and a CUP, a combined permitting process. County has expressed the desire to have the land of the WORF site, the 27 acres annexed. in prior to building permits. The city itself will be issuing permits for the construction of the Forest Main Injection Wells Pump Stations. Typically, you're into design before you, these are kind of the unique processes to go through permitting because designer is also the constructor. So we'll have design information that will feed into the permitting process through this design period, and we'll be working on those permits. I think it's wrong to say that this hasn't had a public review process. This council, the Planning Commission, has reviewed the project description and the EIR through a couple of public hearings. So we know what we're building. The project description was approved and authorized to move forward with by the city council. And that's what we're proposing, to construct a component of that, but not without permits first. So we understand that there are permits necessary. These are public processes, and we'll be working towards those in the design stage. We cannot construct anything without a permit. There's not a permit required for design work.
Another question regarding that would be, so Cayucas has a different process that they're going through because they're not a city. They're able to engage in a different process, but did they not get into a contractual relationship prior to the permitting?
That's correct. They hired a construction manager at risk. The same company, one of the same companies that we'll be using, Philanc, is working with them. They are going through the, or have gone through the conditional use permit process with the county after entering into that contractual relationship. So, and I believe that they're going to start grading soon, just as an aside. They issued their first, with construction management, they issued different packages for delivery of the product, and grading will start soon out there on the Toro Creek site.
Okay.
Ms. Bates talked about the public notice and didn't understand that section refers to subcontracting, and it refers back to the Public Contracts Code requirements for advertising to subcontracting. Well, the Public Contracts Code refers back to the city's process for procuring subcontracting and the advertising requirements. And it depends on the monetary level of how we would procure those contracts. We use, I'm going to get the name of this wrong, a cost accounting method for, and we've, we, there's three levels of procurement for construction in the way they're advertised. Under $45,000 is three quotes, between $45,000 and 125 or 120. I'll have to look back at our policy to get the number exact. It's an informal bid process. And then above 120 or 125, it's a formal bid process that we would go through. So it's to ensure that there's advertising out there that appropriate numbers of subcontractors can bid on that work.
Okay, great. And the intellectual property, wasn't, I thought I read something?
Yeah, it's on, that's probably the easiest one to answer. I just looked that up. It is on page, oh, now I've lost it again.
It's on page 94, Section 9.9, Property Rights.
Okay, good.
It provides that in the event of termination of the contract, intellectual property will become the city's property. And on that note, I believe that question was specifically about if there's a bankruptcy or if the businesses go under. On the two pages before, on page 92, Section 9.2.1, it talks about different events that can allow the city to terminate the contract without any cost to the city. One of those is if the entities go bankrupt. And so if they go bankrupt, then we would terminate the contract, and then we get the IP rights, intellectual property rights.
Okay. I think that covers it. Unless there are any other questions, if there's follow-up questions from council at this point, we can bring it back into deliberation. Any follow-up questions? Red, you want to start us off with deliberation on this?
I'm satisfied with the answers to the questions and the quality of the questions, and I'm ready to proceed and to recommend that the mayor put his Jamie Irons on the agreement.
Okay. Matt?
In consideration of the holistic approach in terms of all the answers that we have coming in from different parties, I too agree and would be in approval to move ahead with this contract.
All right, John?
Great, thank you. I also agree. I think due diligence has been done. I am very satisfied having reviewed the contract in detail, having spent time with Eric today going over other detailed questions and the answers to the ones I asked today. Just want to make sure we included the one change about the APCD board, as well as informally contacting the landowner and the skilled nursing facility. I don't know if that needs to be in the contract, but that would be, two of the issues I think are very important. And as long as staff assures me that that's going to happen, I don't know that there needs to be a contractual change. The only one I caught was the APCD addition. So I, yes.
Councilman, on that note, I would suggest that if the council wants to include the language of county APCB, then when the council approves this contract for signature, we formally include that addition, and then I have where it would go. So then this printed contract formally will be changed for the mayor's signature.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Morales?
Yes, I too support moving forward. I think it's important. This is really part of the implementation process of decisions that we've already made. And so I think it's time to just continue on forward quickly.
Okay, thanks. I too agree with this. I can, I agree with the contract. It can support the process in which we got here. The 218 process, every step of the way that we've made to get here has been laborious, and it's one of the public processes that we've had to go through. So I would agree with this and support staff recommendation to approve the contract. And I just want to just clarify, so Mr. Newmeyer, Chris, so the one contractual change would be the APCD added to 3.2, 3.1. So we could make a motion to approve this with the added language to include APCD in that paragraph?
Yes, and it would specifically be in lines one and lines five. County APCB would be inserted between the term state and the term city.
And?
The section again, I'm sorry.
Section 3.2, 3.1, on page 65.
Thank you.
And then Dana, you can attest that I'll read this and make sure it's there, as always. Okay, great, thanks. All right. With that, I'd take a motion to, let's get back here.
I take a motion to staff recommendation to approve the contract between Philanc and Black and Beach for design construction of new water reclamation facility.
But still moved with the authorization to allow the mayor to execute the agreement in the amount of $67,234,512, with the addendum to change Section 3.2, 3.1, line one and line five, add county APCD.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Heading, second by Ms. McPherson. Any further discussion on that? Good motion. Thanks for the clarity on that. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Any other comments or additional direction on this that needs to be discussed?
I just really wanted to thank the team, which includes our local staff and our consultant staff, for a very detailed process that I think, that I know protects the major risk concerns that I've seen in other contracts like this, that we've talked about and that the council, I think, feels comfortable with. So thanks for all of the excellent work, including our legal staff as well, for overseeing this and making this a very solid contract.
Okay. Thanks, and I think we all can echo those thanks. Thank you. With that, we can, do we need to take a little short recess before, yeah, we'll take a short recess before item C2. Thanks very much. Okay, we're back live, and we are accumulating all our players, team players, and one council member, and we'll be right up. We're all here. All right, thank you. Welcome back, everybody. Next up is item C2, consideration approval of T-Bid Accumulation Fund Support for Hosting Amgen Tour of California Stage Finish in Morro Bay. And Scott, you want to introduce this item?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor. Scott Collins, City Manager. And we're here to bring forward an item that discusses the city hosting California, Tour of California in 2019 in May, and also consideration of T-Bid Accumulation Fund Support for the portion of the hosting requirements that will not be covered by Visit Slough Cal. Jen Little, the tourism manager, will provide the presentation, but I just want to give you a brief overview that we've learned some lessons from the hosting experience that we had in 2017, and can put those into practice and play that will help us reap greater benefit from hosting the event, as well as reduce costs that we incurred the first time around. So with that, I will turn it over to Jen Little. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to give you a quick background on Amgen, the race. So Visit California is our statewide tourism agency, and they report the seven-day race has an overall economic impact of over $100 million or more to the state. And Visit California has made a gallant effort to keep this here in our state. Amgen is comprised of world-class male and female cyclists representing 34 countries, and they give equal pay to men and women, which is really nice. Give you some quick facts on the race and show some photos of when it came through our town the last two times. So this is the largest annual spectator sporting event in California, and it's the largest cycling event in North America. They have 117 men and 89 women that ride in the race. This is the corner coming down. This was 2017. They came down Marina and turned onto Embarcadero right in front of the Shell Shop. That photo I love. They have over 17 hours of total broadcast coverage and over 200 countries and territories that the event is broadcast in, which is really strong for us, looking at international visitors. What they're doing this year is Visit California is looking to basically duplicate what they did for the Dream Drive. It's going to start at Laguna Seca in Monterey and come all the way down Highway 1 and end in Morro Bay. And to me, that's the really critical part, is we're bringing them down Highway 1 and straight into Morro Bay, which is what we're trying to rebuild. They have over 15.92 million viewers that watch the race every year, and out of that on NBC, there is about 105,000 viewers that watch it nationally. So those are really strong numbers for Morro Bay. 14.5 million viewers watched the Eurosport Live and also the replay coverage as well. Tour Tracker is, you're able to download that onto your phones and watch it as they come through all the different stages, and they stream over 112,000 hours, averaging 51 minutes per viewing video session. So that's really strong numbers for us. And the web tracker is also really strongly used. So what we did in 2017 was we brought them down through the state parks, so we were able to show off the National Estuary and bring them through the whole back bay. And it shows a really new and really an area that doesn't get a lot of show, which I like to show more about Morro Bay. As far as social media, they have over 125 million reach into Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. And in our research that we've been doing with our new Adair Impact with tourism, we're realizing that the majority of our room booking nights are coming through Facebook. So these numbers, again, correlate really well with what we're doing as well in Morro Bay. Here's the route. So basically, they're coming from the north, down Highway 1. They'll go past Morro Bay, get off at South Bay Boulevard, just like they did in 2017, go through the state park, down around the point, and then they come up Main Street, and they turn left on Marina, and then they turn right on Embarcadero. And then what they want to do, it's really important, they have an uphill finish because flat finish doesn't really, you know, doesn't get the drive in them. They want a really strong uphill finish. And also, with the rock having a divided road, they can't finish out at the rocks. That was why it was moved in 2017 up to Harbor Street. And so that's what they're proposing again, is to do the same finish up on Harbor Street Little background on the 2017 race that was held here in Morro Bay. We put together some pretty strong packages with any assets that Amgen gave us. They gave us some VIP packages, and we required guests to stay two nights in a room that was valued over $199 a night. And we booked 34 of those packages out of 54 that were given to us from Amgen. And then we had a swag promotion that we did as well, and gave those to everybody that stayed that night, and we booked over 357 rooms. So, you know, it's not a huge amount of rooms, but it does show incremental rooms on midweek, so we were glad to see those be used. Amgen staff, they're required to have a certain amount of rooms with us, and we're not able to house a lot of teams here, unfortunately, because they require onsite food and beverage. And so what they do is they put a lot of their staff here. And so last time, their total bookings for room and food was $72,982 in 2017 that came back into the city in room booking nights. There's a TV spot that we produced in 2017. It costs us about $10,000 to produce. We'll reuse that this year, so we will not have to produce that again. And then there was a PR contract that was done also in 2017, and after working closely with Amgen, we're realizing we don't need to do that this time, that there's enough double up that we can just save that money and let them manage that part of it. As far as city hosting responsibilities and the associated costs, they're very similar to 2017. We'd be responsible for providing hotel rooms and foods for the Amgen participants, media staff, and additional logistical support with city staff. I don't know if you can read those numbers. I'll, you want me to bring them off to you? I'll go through them real quickly. So financial impact, the hosting stage, it could be between $85,000 and $95,000 total. Visit Slough Cal, our countywide tourism bureau, has allocated $50,000 towards this event, and it would be split between us and Pismo Beach, who has the start. Most likely, we'd receive at least $30,000. In 2017, we received $32,000, just so you're aware. The total room nights, this is really funny, I printed mine in black and white, so the numbers didn't come out. I have them here though. So the total room nights for the 350 to 400 rooms was, would be $40,000. The team meals would be roughly $17,000. The media meals, $4,000. Porta potties, $3,000. Communications, bringing in cabling for all the international media is $52.50. We'll hire a planner that will work alongside city staff since we don't have a deputy city manager this time, and that cost is $12,000. And then we have miscellaneous, and there are $5,000. So the total expenses are anticipated to be $86,000 roughly. Visit Slough Cal support would be, we're estimating $30,000. And then the income, which I already kind of went through, we just used the 2017 numbers. Income- last time. And then creating it into what is not just what I'd call a one-day event, really using it as the springboard for long-term. What I want to do is really do outreach into mountain biking, road biking, and BMX, go after all the different categories of biking. And on our website, really get into doing some interactive routes on morrobay.org. And they can be routes that have to do with, you know, bringing your bike down on the train, and how you get from the Amtrak station to Morro Bay for your stay, and then give them routes. And you really use, this is your base to go out and cycle from, because we are really in the middle of the county. Who wants to go fix that for me? Scott, thanks, Scott. You know, being in the middle of the county, we can really be the hub and go out from here. So we're talking with, you know, like RTA, you know, you can put your bikes on there. So really give cyclists really good ideas, if you want to do a ride out, you know, take the bus back, you know, so you can ride up to Cambria, have coffee, and bike back. And so really create the synergy that we want to be the hub of where you come to bike and spend your time in Morro Bay. One of the things we also talked about, we have a bi-weekly group that meets of the city, different city managers, and we talk about permits. And one of the things that I floated them is the possibility of doing a requirement or a condition on permits for larger events to have a bike valet. The avocado margarita does this, and it's really successful. And those type of small little things can really set us apart as being a really bike-friendly community. So that's one of the things that we're gonna look at, is possibly that. Setting up some social and email campaigns that really integrate the local bike tourism and the city and county different bike groups. I'll work pretty hard on setting that up. And then maybe on a long-term strategy, what about doing like a bike share, where you unlock, ride, and share your bike? So that's another thing that I want to look at. So lots of thoughts and lots of ideas on how to make Amgen really a springboard for us as a community, I think is really where we need to go, not just take it as the one day it's here and then it leaves. So just to review the T-Bid recommendation, one of the things that they had mentioned in the recommendation was that they were looking for council or city staff to recommend to do, I don't know how you want to say it, Scott, just do improvements on Harbor Street that day of, so it just looks really nice, which I thought was a fair thing to say. So we just said that the board supports hosting Amgen to use between 55 and 65,000 out of the T-Bid accumulation fund to support the associated hosting costs, and request beautification of Harbor Street during the finish. That's it.
All right, Jen. Great. Thanks for the presentation. We'll go for questions from council, and then public comment, and then back to talk about this. Marlese, you want to start us off?
Okay. All right, I'm happy to start. I'm very curious to understand better, since we now have experience having done this. And I did participate in both when we started the race and when we ended the race. We should have some sense of how it benefits tourism in Morro Bay. I understand it's a long-term kind of thing, because we're getting exposure on television, and people are looking at us. And, but we should have some idea. And I'm just wondering if you have any statistics or any data that would suggest what the impact was on tourism in Morro Bay from those two events?
I don't, Marlese. To set something like that up, we'd probably have to put some pretty strong parameters in place before the event, and it would be pretty costly to do that tracking. But we could do it. We just haven't for financial reasons. As far as talking with restaurants, hotels, retailers, they all are very supportive of the event. They see great influence when it comes into town, and they would really welcome it back.
Right. Do we ever do any surveys where we ask our tourists how they heard about Morro Bay and how they happened to come here?
We're actually in the middle of doing, we're part of a survey that the county's doing, is how we're doing it. So we have a few questions that we've, we've asked, but none of them are specifically Amgen-related.
Right. But if, I mean, they would volunteer it if they said, "Well, I saw it on an Amgen." You know, "I was watching the Amgen event, and I saw Morro Bay, and this made me want to do it." Because we're, we're trying to hope that we get that kind of positive result from hosting it, aside from just the event itself. Then I was also curious, and I see you have a planner in here, is this intended to take over the responsibilities that Akani did, because he was critical to making that event a success? And just if you could tell us how the city intends to handle that now that we don't have a deputy city manager?
Well, I think we'll, we'll handle a lot of it. You know, there'll be an operations chief inside that will kind of deal with the permitting components. We haven't identified who that is yet, but we have a few suitors that will be voluntold to do it. But, you know, I did poll all the department heads and universal support for this, to understand, you know, what it means to us in the long term. But we, we couldn't, I couldn't put it all on one person like we had with the deputy city manager. So I think it's a sharing of responsibilities. Ultimately, Jen will be the coordinator, kind of on the hotel tourism side, but then we'll have an operations chief to make sure that police, fire, public works are all working well together. I think the event coordinator will really do some of the key synergy between the city and Amgen, to make sure all, all of our eyes are dotted and Ts are crossed. So it's kind of a team approach versus a, a single point of entry, or a single point of contact to do everything. I think that was where we had failures last time.
But you, but you do have at least one position, so you're gonna be able to add somewhat to existing staff.
That's right.
Yeah. We know that Akani spent a fair amount of time on it.
Absolutely.
And we also know that it takes a significant number of volunteers, and so I was happy to see the letter from the Lions. Have you thought about how you intend to get volunteers? I know I volunteered to stand in the street and cheer them. I did something, but I had a yellow vest on.
Yeah. Well, we're pleased, pleased to receive the email from Ray, and that's, that's tremendous. And they were very successful last time around, and we'd hope to have the same partnership. And already put in some lessons learned from the last time that we can improve upon. So we don't see that being an issue with this going forward.
Any other organizations that were used last time or could be helpful in?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we'd be open to those ideas. And, you know, obviously, we have untapped potential with, with our youth. And there was a, I think there was a good connection last time with, with the school, maybe the elementary school, but maybe strengthening that from last time, and really finding ways, not only for volunteerism, but to encourage biking and safe, safe biking habits, and just getting the youth interested in this event as well.
And we have a bike club in the county, apparently, that could be called upon to help?
There you go.
Is that right? And when do we have to make the decision or let Amgen know that we are gonna do this?
They're, they were looking for a decision, you know, in June. Obviously, the sooner the better for them, because they have to put all their routes together and to line up all their sponsorships. But they also understand that there is political processes involved, so the sooner the better from their vantage point. Obviously, you know, council has to feel comfortable with the decision before saying yes or no. But I don't think there's much, there's much room for delay beyond this point.
Okay. And any, any other cities interested in the county, aside from Pismo?
No, I think there are other cities would consider. I talked to other city managers just to get their vantage point before we brought this recommendation to T-Bid. The city of Slow will be interested in doing it again. I think, I think Paso would probably do it again. There's not a position to host. Plus, Amgen was looking for a coastal finish, especially with Highway 1, you know, being reopened. So there may be other places in the county, but they prefer it be us.
All right. Thanks. Thank you.
No problem.
All right, John?
Thank you. Thanks, Jen, for the presentation. I think great information. The, the expenses, just wondering approximately how much additional staff time, like overtime, those kinds of things that aren't fully loaded into the cost? Just an estimate, are we talking about 10 grand or?
Yeah, for direct costs, I mean, I'm not, not including the time that staff would normally, just their normal hours. But if you're just straight, straight overtime and things that you would normally attribute to, to a day of a event, it would probably be in the $10,000 range.
Okay, good. That's helpful. The, and do I understand correctly that we will maintain our 20% reserve level in the T-Bid fund?
That's correct.
The accumulation fund, if we do this, we will maintain that?
That's right. You'll be over by maybe another percentage point. Yeah.
And is Mr. Roboto still working with us in terms of the potential of having his vision realized, which I think is critical to future return on investment for a project like this? Would he be engaged in helping you further define some of the things that you had outlined there?
Yeah, I think we, we've kind of mined him for, for those ideas. He, he's the gentleman we're working with on our strategic plan for, for tourism. He has vast experience in South Lake Tahoe and utilizing Amgen. And we've been in talks with him where we can on the side to, to mine him for ideas. And that's where some of, some of those ideas that Jen was able to brainstorm came directly from.
Good. Thank you. That's it. Thanks. Matt?
Yes, I do have a question there for you. In terms of infrastructure, Scott, and knowing that we've done this route before, and will we look at the route and see if there's any problems with it? And will we have to, I guess I'm looking at the bottom line, spend any additional monies besides the money that we would, this 50,000, 58,000?
If you're, if this is in kind of response to the beautification, I haven't really thought about that, what that would look like. It sounded like T-Bid was looking for just kind of sprucing up the visuals, the day of, and if there are low-cost ways of doing that, that would also just kind of benefit the area anyhow. We, we try to identify what those are. I don't see it being a significant expense, maybe a couple thousand dollars. But I don't know what that would look like yet, without having gone out there myself.
Okay, great. Red?
Thanks. The, the event coordinator, and I think I know the answer to this, you've budgeted $12,000, and you feel confident that you can get an experienced, qualified event coordinator for $12,000?
I do. I actually have spoken with several people, and the lady that I'm interested, she is slow marathon, and she's worked directly on Amgen several times. She was recommended by the race coordinator from Amgen, and I think she'd do really great for us.
That sounds like Samantha Pruitt.
It is.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Okay. I don't have any questions. I probably have more comments at this point. So I'm looking for a public comment for this item. I don't have any speaker slips. Is there anybody that'd like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back for, to council for discussion. Marlese, you want to start us off?
Well, this is really an exciting event, and I have to confess that when I was in Long Beach at the California League of Cities conference, I stopped at the Amgen booth, chatted with the woman, and she really said she loved Morro Bay. She, "Oh, yes, we'd like to come back to Morro Bay," she said. So I, I do support this. I would like us to do some better tracking of trying to understand what the impact is, the, the benefits to Morro Bay long-term from this event. I always feel more comfortable if we understand both the costs and the benefits, and it would be nice to learn more about that. And I'll just throw that out as something I'd like you guys to think about. But I, I support moving forward.
Okay, John?
There we go. Yes, Jen, thank you. And Scott, thank you for your information. I supported it as well. For me, I think the key piece is on page 206 of the staff report, and that's the vision that you've cast with Mr. Roboto. And that, to me, really will provide a more significant return on investment, if we realize that. We have a lot of natural assets here that are remittable to the, the biking industry and bikers, bicyclists, I should say. And I think that the more this plan gets flushed out, the better we're going to understand the ROI, and that could be very significant. I, too, was involved as a volunteer last time. It was a great event, very exciting for the city. And I just wanted to make sure you've ordered the weather for that day, and it's gonna be appropriate. And so I'm, I'm supportive. I thank you for that. And again, I think that vision is critical.
Thanks. Matt?
Yes, I also support this. I think, considering the last two times we've done it, and with this one, I think we just nowhere, nowhere but up, considering also with the event that we had at The Rock last, a number of months ago with the opening of Highway 1. This will be a great way to do it with bicycles.
Okay, great. Red?
I look at this as not just the one-day event, but this is, this is an addition to the Morro Bay reputation, the, the branding of who we are. We are essentially at the terminus of the Pacific Coast Bike Route, and that's Highway 1. That's designated by the California Legislature as California's official bicycle route. And it's an international destination. Bicyclists come from all over the world. They typically ride from north to south, because you take advantage of prevailing winds. And they come out of that beautiful 100-mile ride, and here we are. We're the end of that route. And that's, we have a priceless location for that. Councilman Heading, Mayor Irons, and I had the opportunity last week to, to host a group of wounded warriors, project hero, that came down. I don't think they came all the way on Highway 1. They came from Paso Robles.
No, no, they actually, they, what, their, their route, I'm sorry if you don't mind, because it's a great story.
Yeah.
You know, they actually, the day before, they came from Marina to San Simeon.
Okay.
And so our route was a recovery day, because that was a pretty long route. So they were going San Simeon, and they stopped in Morro Bay for a break, and then they were going to Pismo Beach. But great story. I'm glad you brought that up.
And that happens almost every week. A group of bicyclists come through here. They come through so often, we don't even know they're coming. But we have the AIDS Ride come through here every year. We have Best Buddies. Slow Bike Club hosts their annual century, starting here in Morro Bay. We are a hub for bicycling and an international destination. And, and this, this simply adds to the legend of that. I love the idea, Jennifer, that you're gonna do the, the Breakaway Walk for Cancer. I did that the year they finished in Cambria, and that's, that's a wonderful draw. In addition, makes, adds to the festivity of the day. And I think taking this and extending that long-range vision that, that you mentioned, Scott, this is just part of, of who we are and what we do here in Morro Bay. We are an outdoor recreation city, and we have, we have more outdoor activities in Morro Bay than anywhere else in San Luis Obispo County. So I guess I'll conclude by, oh, Samantha Pruitt, I know Samantha. She does the Slow Marathon. And you talk about a logistical nightmare, where you're closing streets on Sunday in San Luis Obispo, and, and she carries that off year after year. She also does the Ultra Run in Wild Cherry Canyon. So I'm just gonna, oh, and Ray. Ray, with his 150 volunteers, coordination with the Lions, they're experienced, they want to do it. Oh, and I did contact Jim Lewis in Pismo Beach and asked if, if their city supports this, and he said yes. So I will conclude by saying that I support the expenditure for the event.
Thanks, Red. Yeah, no, no, I'm not, not gonna try, but I support this as well. I do want to share a letter to the public.
taking this and extending that long-range vision that you mentioned, Scott, this is just part of who we are and what we do here in Morro Bay. We are an outdoor recreation city, and we have more outdoor activities in Morro Bay than anywhere else in San Luis Obispo County. So I guess I'll conclude by, oh, Samantha Pruitt, I know Samantha. She does the Slow Marathon. And you talk about a logistical nightmare where you're closing streets on Sunday in San Luis Obispo, and she carries that off year after year. She also does the ultra-run in Wild Cherry Canyon. So I'm just going to, oh, and Ray. Ray, with his 150 volunteers, coordination with the Lions, they're experienced, they want to do it. Oh, and I did contact Jim Lewis in Pismo Beach and asked if their city supports this, and he said yes. So I will conclude by saying that I support the expenditure for the event.
Thanks, Red. Yeah, no, no, I'm not going to try, but I support this as well. I do want to share a letter to the public that actually I copied City Council on as well. This was a mayor, this was a letter that was drafted, it was during a discussion at one of the mayor's meetings. And over the course of years, the mayors meet the first Friday of every month and discuss all things, the city government and the county. And as mayors, we've crafted letters of support for different things throughout, at least my term. And then at this, when was it? It was in July, and reached out to Chuck Davison and talked to him about this concept, and he helped draft this letter, which I'll read. And it basically was a letter addressed to the Amgen Tour of California to let them know that Highway One is reopened and invite them back to San Luis Obispo County. And it was an informal letter to some degree, but signed by all the mayors, which was really pretty cool. So I'll just, and then following that, of course, Dana copied all of council on this letter. I'll just read it real briefly. "To whom it may concern, Amgen. We are writing to invite you, invite the Amgen Tour of California to once again feature scenic San Luis Obispo County, Slow Cal, and Highway One as a stage for the 2019 tour. We are pleased to share that in July, Highway One is scheduled to reopen to the public, once again allowing cyclists and visitors to enjoy the iconic 122-mile stretch of coast-hugging highway stretching from Morro Bay to Monterey. Since the inception of the Amgen Tour of California in 2006, the tour riders and spectators have enjoyed the diverse landscape that San Luis Obispo County has to offer with miles of beaches, sand dunes, vineyards, wineries stretching across the region. Through sponsorship of the 2016-17 race, our countywide tourism office, Visit Slow Cal, was able to support cities like Morro Bay and Pismo Beach to become hosts of this fantastic race that showcases the beauty of our county as well as the state of California. As the mayors of San Luis Obispo County cities, we are thrilled for the opportunity to be part of the Amgen Tour of California once again in 2019. And to celebrate the reopening of Highway One as a critical stretch of this iconic California experience, the San Luis Obispo County communities and Visit Slow Cal will help make the next tour a premier magnet for cyclists and fans across the globe. Please help us support our smaller communities on Highway One and showcase Slow Cal, California, and AEG to the world." And this is signed by all the mayors of the county, Tascadero, Grover Beach, Paso Robles, Pismo Beach, San Luis Obispo, Ro Grande, and myself. And I think it just speaks, it was pretty cool. It wasn't necessarily an invitation to come back to Morro Bay or Pismo Beach, per se, but everyone bought into, hey, we do want to showcase San Luis Obispo County and the reopening of Highway One. And I think it speaks a lot to Slow Cal's vision in maintaining a strong relationship and having at least one stage finished in the county somewhere as part of the ongoing signature event of the Amgen Tour of California. So of course, support it and would be willing, just one of their comment, I think, on the beautification part, all kinds of ideas with that. More Bay and Bloom was here tonight. There's, the planer boxes are totally mobile, can be moved with a forklift. Those can be dressed up and moved around. There's plenty of opportunity, dressing up the bike park for visuals. There's all kinds of different things. And I'm sure there's a lot of creativity, Jen, in your department for all that. So those are all my comments. And with that, I would take a motion. Red?
Yes, I would like to move that council approve hosting the 2019 Amgen Tour of California Highway One Stage Finish in Morro Bay, and approve use of between $55,000 to $65,000 in T-Bid accumulation funds to support the associated hosting costs.
So we have a second, so motion by Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Makawetzky. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. Perfect. All right, thanks, everybody. Thank you, Jen. Next up, item C3, adoption of resolution number 8618, approving amendment number four to the new master lease agreement between the city of Morro Bay and the Boatyard LLC for lease site 8989W located at 845 Embarcadero, commonly known as the Boatyard, and amendment number two to the new lease, master lease agreement between the city of Morro Bay and Fair Sky Properties LLC for lease site 9090W located at 885 Embarcadero and commonly known as Otter Rock Cafe. Scott, are you going to introduce the item, or is Eric going to take this one?
Just go straight to the man.
Okay, we're going straight to the man. Okay, Eric, you're the man.
Thank you, Mayor Irons and council. I apologize for the lengthy title there, but get them as short as we can. So our purpose here tonight is obtain council approval on two new amendments for the subject leases, as you spoke, the 8989W, which is the Boatyard, and 9090W, which is Otter Rock Cafe, and including two possible options to choose from on these amendments presenting tonight for the two lease sites. We're recommending council approve the resolution, 8618, approving amendment number four to the lease site, to the lease for 8989W, and amendment two to the lease for 9090W as presented, depending on which option council chooses to go with tonight. If option one is chosen, the Harbor Fund would not receive approximately $22,500 because of an additional six-month period of rent concession for the lease site in 8989W. I say approximately because the rent concession is on the total rent paid, which is the minimum rent plus the percent rent. But as the lease is currently structured, it is highly unlikely the percent gross amounts would exceed the minimum rent, which is $22,500. So should for all intents and purposes be $22,500. For background information on this, we've visited this item. I dare not count how many times this year, or really in the last two years, but I'll give a little background for those in TV land or elsewhere. In 2015, a portion of the seawall in 8989W suffered a major failure. Precipitated negotiations with the leaseholder on that site eventually resulted in mutually beneficial package in the form of a new master lease agreement for that site to mitigate the loss and settle all legal claims. The master lease agreement for 8989W has now been amended several times to account for new developments, including rent concessions. The city additionally negotiated the new master lease agreement for the adjacent site, 9090W, with the same owner of 8989W contingent upon successful purchase of this site and a significant site rehabilitation project being proposed by that leaseholder. The contingency of the lease agreement on 89 is for the successful purchase of the lease on 90W. So both the seawall repair project in 89 and the rehabilitation project on 90W are contingent upon the city issuing final building permits for both projects by October 31st, 2018. During the second week of October, the city's plant check firm noted various items for both sites requiring significant additional attention. It is now unlikely the city will be able to meet the October 31st deadline. The leaseholder is willing to extend the deadline to November 23rd, 2018, in addition to establishing November 30th as a specific date by which they could seek recovery for damages should a lawsuit ensue over the seawall failure in exchange for an additional six months of the rent concession. Approval of these amendments will ensure the continued global resolution of several significant issues at play here, including possible litigation and including integration of the two-site rehabilitation projects into one cohesive project. Increased cost to the lessee resulting from unanticipated planned changes and additional time for works to commence has caused the lessee to seek these additional rent concession amounts. Staff recommend it is the city's best interest to approve these two amendments, including the additional rent concession. The decision for council tonight, aside from approval of the amendment itself to enable the additional time for the city to issue the permits, is whether or not to approve the additional rent concession of $22,500. In real short-term language, a little bit of short-term pain for a little more long-term gain, or maybe the lack of loss is a better way of putting it than gain. So we looked at this just a few hours ago in closed session, as you well know, and looked at several issues at play here. And I'll open it up to council for any questions you might have.
Okay, we'll start out questions. Red, do you want to start off questions?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Thanks, Matt. John? Marloes?
No questions.
I have a question for Scott Graham. So the plans received, can you explain the city's responsibility on that, ensure that there wasn't anything the city, you know, as far as fault, and how those plans went through?
So the applicant submitted, Mr. Branch submitted development applications to the Building Department on both Otter Rock and Boatyard. Those went through our review process in that they were routed from our Building Department to the other responsible departments. So went to Fire, went to Public Works, went to Planning. And we also sent out to California Code Check, who performs our commercial plan check, performs commercial plan checks for us. We received comments back from Public Works, from Planning, conditional approval from Fire, and several plan check comments on both applications from California Code Check. Those comments were forwarded on to Mr. Branch and his team of architects, engineers, and so forth. And he submitted revised plans, partial submittal on Otter Rock last Friday. He still owes us plans for, in response to comments made by Public Works and Planning. And he submitted this morning the response on the Boatyard property. And so we took those in, and we're forwarding those on to our plant check consultants and to the various departments that are responsible for comments. And so that's kind of the status of it, where it stands right now. And so this amendment to the agreement would essentially accommodate the additional timeframe for us to continue processing those applications through to permit issuance.
Okay. How many items were there, did you say, that needed to be reviewed or were sent back for additional information correction?
The total number, I'm not sure. There was, because they come from all the different departments, the ones that came back from California Code Check, I think totaled 80-something on one and 60-something on the other. I forget which went which. Actually, there was quite a few comments that came back. A lot of them were fairly minor comments. Some of them were more significant, dealing with ADA requirements and things like that. But most of them were things that were easily addressable. I know the team that was working on the Otter Rock application spoke directly with California Code Check related to their concerns and worked out solutions to any of the issues that were a little more significant. And my guess is that point, that response is probably going to be pretty close to done once California Code Check reviews it because they went over each of the items that were of concern.
Okay. All right, thanks. Those are all my questions. Look for public comment to this item. Anybody had opened up for public comment, for anybody who'd like to speak to this? Seeing none, don't have any speaker slips. I'll close public comment, bring it back to council for deliberation, and I'll look to Red, if you want to start us off.
I'm satisfied, based on our discussions, to follow staff's recommendation.
Matt?
I, too, am in support of staff's recommendation. This has an interesting history to this whole project, and so we're at this point, definitely want to move ahead with it.
Thanks. John?
Yes, thank you. I agree with the comments that were made. I'm in support of it. Having been involved directly with the negotiation as part of the subcommittee of the council with the mayor, I am intimately familiar with the potential risk to the city of litigation and also the long-term implications of not doing this with regard to seawall failure, which presents a significant public health hazard. And so for those reasons, I think the extension is warranted along with the additional six months. I'd also like to comment on the excellent job that Mr. Graham has done, and also Mr. Andrewsby, in dealing with this issue, in processing a significant amount of information in a short time, in dealing with very complex negotiations that have been handled very appropriately and with great expertise and knowledge. And I just want to thank you both for that, realizing the amount of time that has taken on your part to intervene for the city. So I am in support.
Thanks, Marloes.
I couldn't have said it better. I also support moving forward. I think we talked about it in closed session, and I understand exactly what we're doing.
Okay. All right, thanks. I'll support this as well. And John, thanks for articulating the accolades to Scott, Scott, Eric, and, you know, Joe Panoni's not here, but Chris is well. But there's been a lot of support from staff in this, so appreciate all that. It's been a long project. There's been a lot to it. And I would hope that the applicant would be as cooperative as staff in working through this. So there's still more work to do, and hopefully we can turn this down, turn this around. It's not necessarily easy. There's a lot of complexities to waterfront development, and maybe that's partially to that, you know, first-time waterfront development for the applicant. So maybe there's some learning curve there, but hopefully we can get through that, and we can move on and have a productive site. So with that, I would take a motion for this item.
Sure. Move adoption of resolution number 86-18, approving amendment number four to the new master lease agreement between the city of Morro Bay and Boatyard LLC for lease site 89/89W located at 845 Embarcadero and commonly known as the Boatyard, and amendment number two to the new master lease agreement between the city of Morro Bay and Fair Sky Properties LLC for lease site 90/90W located at 885 Embarcadero and commonly known as the Otter Rock Cafe.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Heding, second by Ms. McPherson. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, that concludes all of our business items. Moving on to declaration feature gen items. Seeing none. Our next regular meeting will be held Tuesday, November 13, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. right here at the Veterans Memorial Hall located at 209 South Street here in Morro Bay, and we can adjourn the meeting. Thank you.